We're ready to divert from our normal order slightly. And take the swings ceremony for David Cohen, Sean Mullins. Before we have some comments on Monday night. So if if the gentlemen are ready.
So thank you to the board of selectmen for allowing us the opportunity to swear. You know, as I think I said before, the ceremony is a pinnacle in an officer's career and always something that you could remember until the day you retire. So Officer Co comes to us from the Gordon College Police Department where he served as a patrol officer since 2017. When not working as a patrol officer, he continues to serve his church in Woburn as an educational ministry director and the director of youth ministry. Officer Cole holds a masters in divinity, a master of science and architecture and engineering, and a bachelor of science in construction and urban engineering. Officer Co is a graduate of the Methuen Police Academy in 2018. He's a certified EMT and a weapons. Officer Mullins began his career with us in 2019 as an auxiliary police officer. He was promoted to reserve officer and part-time dispatcher in January of 2020. In February of 2021, Officer Mullins became a full-time public safety dispatcher. And in July of 2022, he was appointed full-time police officer. After his appointment in July of 2022, Officer Mullins attended the Lethfield Police Academy where he graduated the on April 28th with with the second recruit officers class. Officer Mullins holds a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice with a concentration in criminal investigation and a minor in legal studies. He also holds a Master of Science in Criminal Justice with a concentration in criminal justice. He's a certified EMT and he's received two lifesaving awards since his tenure here with the Manchester Police Department. Officer Mullins has also done work with mentoring academically disengaged students from Salem High School. Both in a group and one-on-one setting. These activities include field trips, workshops. And the one-on-one settings was academic help, assistance with school-based subjects and guidance with personal matters. So as you can see, both these officers are welcome members of the police department. Their training and skills in helping and mentoring you will be a huge asset for us and it strives to accomplish what we are doing with our community police. So I know I'm speaking for the rest of the department and everyone here, welcome and congratulations. I look forward to working with you both. So at this time Diane would swear them both then.
So we swear that you uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the bylaws of the town of Manchester by the sea, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as full-time police officers to the best of your abilities and knowledge. Welcome. Thank you very much.
And finally, thank you very much. Finally, a ceremonial pinning. I'll ask Sean's mom and David's daughter to come up and in their badge. Give me a nice photo of that. The next to your board. All right, guys. Thank you very much. It's been time for the summer rush.
On items on the agenda. Comments from the public on items on our agenda. In that case, we move on to the interview Leah Peavy for the Board of Health. Peavy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I saw the background, the brief background here. He was spoken with the Chair of the Board of Health, I assume.
Yes.
You're here.
He covers you to please approve or?
Okay, all right. A lot of healthcare background here and we appreciate you raising your hand. You're a busy lady. Doing a lot of different things. Well, maybe a lot of different things, but what you're doing keeps you pretty busy. You're gonna have the time for all of this because I assume that you spoke with her.
I currently work hard time right now. I do have a time. I'm excited.
Have you done any community type of service activities? Boards or committees before?
First moved here a while back. I served on like library planning. Ten years ago, I volunteered at the school in the library there. I coached soccer.
All right.
But I've never served on.
This type of for you. I'm sure it'll be great.
I'm gonna ask you something. Am I ever did I miss this or is this what I'm going?
This would be the planning board that you're looking for, which is also meeting at about this time.
Oh, it's not in here.
No, this is this is the select board. This is a planning board and I'm not sure. I know they're on the agenda. Oh, is that what it was?
Three o'clock. Six thirty.
I know it was today.
It's six thirty.
They must have moved it.
May twenty-two.
May twenty-two. Okay.
Good for you for asking.
How did I get that? It's supposed to be next week. There it is. A week from next week.
But you're free to attend if you want.
We were.
No, I'm good. You know, position assistant.
You have a terrific medical backgrounds. That's certainly not in question. Just curious as to what you believe the role of public health is. And how you would approach it. Is there anything in particular you're looking to accomplish as a member of the board?
I mean, I think first just trying to learn what the role is. You're spending updating me and kind of what are what the role is. So trying to figure out how I can use my background to. You know, I definitely have a strong public health interest and especially after going through COVID. I mean, hopefully we're not going to go through something like that again, but.
Not at least for maybe like ninety, ninety-eight years, probably come back again.
But I definitely became very interested at that point in time. I did a lot of work on COVID units there at Fortin Williams Hospital. Yeah, so it definitely sparked my interest.
Thank you. I guess my my question is along the same lines. The Board of Health handles a wide variety of. You consider yourself a quick learner? I feel like I'm. You could say either quick or thorough and each would be a good answer.
Hopefully a quick one. A willing learner.
Good.
So I moved at the Select Board appoint Leah Peavy to the Board of Health to fill the remaining terms of Tony Colpitt's through June thirtieth of 2025.
John.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations. Can I just make a small comment? We actually didn't go over action items and there was just.
Yeah, you're right. Let's track up and do the action item.
Well, so for today, I thought we had everything covered that was going to be due today, but I just wanted to mention, I think there was one that was missing from our last meeting. We had talked about the early voting and we're supposed to have a follow-up. I didn't see it on the action item list. Maybe I just read it wrong, but.
It was put way down because the next one would be the next state primary, wouldn't it?
You're supposed to collect data from the next early voting opportunity. I'm looking at what's in the package and I apologize if I'm missing.
I thought I got the. Okay, I must have got I got the date from the town clerk and then I must have not put it in here.
That's okay.
It's a it's a while though.
Those are the things that tend to get.
Yeah. And I yeah, and I asked her and I got the date. I must.
That's that's the only thing I saw missing.
I'm gonna note that down here. Thank you.
Okay, now we're ready for the water resource department have four recommendations. Could someone give them access to the screen?
Yeah, I'd be happy to share the screen. Thanks, Greg. Yes, here we go. All right, can you see the title page?
Yes.
Excellent. So when we were in front of you on April eighteen, we remember we presented one organizational recommendation and nine policy recommendations. And what I took away from the meeting about the policy recommendations, which were these, was that we should focus our efforts if we're continuing on the conservation steps, which are really numbers one, two, and three. And they they're I think the word is synergistic. They work together. More smarter meters that are digital will help us engineer more, recommend more effective conservation policies and rates. And at the same time, we will hopefully working through the Sustainability Committee or some other some other board or commission that's currently existing, we can help increase conservation awareness and education. But tonight I wanted to focus on water rates because that's a topic that usually comes up for you in June and gets enacted for the beginning of the fiscal year and we have some some well analyzed and considered recommendations. So let me start by where we are today. These are the rates you voted last June thirty. And you see they run from about six, six dollars and fifty-five cents per hundred cubic feet for the smallest amounts to nine dollars and twenty-three cents per cubic feet for the largest amounts. That's a spread of about forty percent, hundred and forty percent for the top versus a hundred percent for the lowest. And that's relatively narrow according to the experts we've consulted with, but not unusual. It it would put us in the survey of two years ago, the most recent survey by the MWRA. It would put us here where the red bar is out of a hundred and forty communities surveyed. What these numbers represent is for a given amount of water, which in this case is twelve thousand cubic feet per year. What would a household pay? In Manchester, that'd be seven hundred and forty-six dollars. It goes as high as thirteen hundred dollars and it goes down into the four hundred dollar range for some communities. So there's nothing unusual about our position today. This kind of spaghetti graph shows you where we are compared to local other local towns. Ours is the heavy dashed black line right here. You can see there's a bit of an increase from the lowest to the highest. There are flat rate communities like Salem. There are communities that have a little escalation like Hamilton, which has a bit more than us or Marblehead. And then the outliers are communities like Topsfield, which deal with the chronic shortage of water there by starting at much higher rates and going up rapidly to really expensive rates, high twenties, high twenties, twenty dollars per hundred cubic feet. And for reference, that would translate into about two and a half cents a gallon. Whereas we are, our rates kind of straddle around one cent a gallon. For comparison, if you're gonna buy drinking water at Walmart in Bubbler or from a bubbler, it might be around a buck fifty a gallon. If you buy it yeah, from Poland Spring in the supermarket, it's around five or six dollars a gallon. These these anomalous lines for Essex, Essex has an unusual policy. They slap a flat rate on every household using water, which means if you're not using much water, you're paying through the nose by by the by the drink, so to speak, by the gallon or cubic foot. But as soon as your usage gets up to relatively high cubic feet, it tails down quite a bit. So nothing unusual about our rates today. Certainly room to move compared to local towns and and what we understand is the growing trend to use rates as one of the tools to conserve. Just a footnote, this is the rough count of households out of about nineteen hundred using households hooked up to water system, which is basically all the households in Manchester. Over half of them are in the low first and second tier. Another almost third are in tier three and then just a smaller number in tier four smattering into your five and six. What we're trying to do here is encourage conservation by all households. And what that really means is to focus on those using the most drinking water in summer. Second, to recover full costs, which is the definition of an enterprise fund, as I understand it. Typically, we you set the rates so that you will cover the cost of operating treatment plant and the distribution system and meters and billing and such. And we think that's you should obviously continue that, but it might be smart to include in those costs some of the cost of sourcing water, sourcing clean water. So steps you might want to authorize to prevent future contamination from, let's say, capped landfills near our reservoir. And that would and currently essentially the product itself, the water is free. We charge our users for treating it, distributing it, measuring it, billing them, but not for the product itself. Third, if we're proposing changes, we need to allow time for people to adjust and for conservation initiatives to ramp up and for new meters to get installed. So we were thinking in terms of recommending, we are recommending that you phase in these rate changes. And finally, and very importantly, we want to avoid any significant risk of reduction to total annual water division revenues because the enterprise fund exists in order to offset the costs of of operations. And if conservation was unusually successful, it could in fact cut into the total revenues, which would be a bad thing. So this is a good time to tell you before I show you the numbers themselves, that the changes we propose will not increase water bills for sixty to seventy percent of the households in Manchester. In fact, they'll decrease slightly in our recommendations. And we'll not raise the average water bill across all households by more than ten percent. But obviously, we will increase water bills noticeably for about a third of households and dramatically for the top fifty or one hundred users who who tend to their use explodes in the summertime. Specifically, these are the current rates and the tiers. We're recommending going from six tiers to four tiers and implementing these new rates gradually over three periods. So this is the endpoint. And here are the three phases by tier. Essentially, we're recommending combining tiers one and two, which are relatively light users and are well below the recommended sixty-five gallons per capita per day, which comes from the state. And also collapsing tiers five and six, which are relatively few people, but characterized by very large use of drinking water, particularly in the summer. So the change would be from, you know, mid six dollars. We're recommending five dollars as move you make in a month or so from seven thirty to almost eight dollars to eight and fifteen dollars. And from eight and a half to nine and a quarter up to twenty dollars. So you see it is it is a major rebalancing of the rate structure. We've run this rate structure for a quick review past a professional consulting firm called Raftellus. And their reaction was that phase three is quite dramatic and would put us kind of out on the bleeding edge, at least in the Northeast of differentials between the lowest tier and the highest tier. But in terms of average rates, much, much less impact. And in terms of rates for most of the bills for most of our users, very little impact, if any. In fact, a noticeable reduction. So they do they do not say that about phase one, which is has only a four times difference between the five dollar lowest tier and the twenty dollar per hundred cubic feet highest tier. So one of the important things here is how this would impact the households in each of these tiers. So we created a model which has been quickly vetted by these expert consultants. And what we did was figure out what people are currently paying on average in each of these tiers and how that would look in the future. So, you know, please focus on these two lines, which are our recommendation for the for the immediate change. In this case, tier one, people are averaging a hundred and forty-eight dollars, tier two, three hundred and fifty-four. As a group, they would drop to a hundred and forty dollars. Not a huge reduction, you know, a couple of lattes a month probably for most households, but certainly a positive step in a climate where everything else is going up. Tier three, six hundred and seventy households paying eight hundred and nineteen dollars. That would go to nine hundred and twenty dollars. So about a ten percent increase. Or twelve percent. Tier four at forty-four fifty-three would go to forty-eight hundred. Tier five and six at eight thousand and almost twenty thousand would go to an average of fourteen six. The average here is ten thousand, go to fourteen six. So this would represent a forty percent increase for roughly sixty households. These numbers vary year to year depending on whether we have drought restrictions, whether people are putting in new landscaping and a few other things. But this is our sort of best educated guess so that the July rates would reduce annual water bills for about fifty-eight percent of the households. Think of them as they're they're the conservators. These are people who are already meeting all of the sort of gold standard metrics that the state and the federal government put out. Ten percent increase for another thirty-nine percent of households. The three percent at the top, the sixty households on the far right here would see their annual water bills rise about forty percent. Please interrupt me if you have questions along the way here. The other important criterion is is the total revenues in to the water division. And forgive me, there's a train coming by, as you'll probably hear out your windows, but it's a lot closer to mine. So I may mute for a second. What we did here was calculate what the total expected revenues in the system are if there is no conservation whatsoever. If there's what we call significant conservation, which is fifty percent reduction by everybody in the top two tiers, the new tiers, three and four. Dramatic conservation would be two thirds reduction in those tiers plus twenty percent in tier two. So virtually everybody who the dramatic conservation would be action by virtually everybody who's who's using water, significant water outdoors. But what we found doing this was that the most likely outcome, which is very little, if any conservation, will actually increase revenues from one and a half million to two point three million from residences. With significant conservation, we come back down to about where it is today, one point five five. It's only if a very unlikely event of dramatic conservation happened immediately this summer, would we see insufficient revenues to cover the costs and we'd have to dip into the reserves in the enterprise fund, which I'm not positive about, but I think are around a half a million dollars today. So this is obviously to be avoided, but we are assured by the experience of other towns and by the advice of these experts at Raftellus that the most likely outcome is this one. People don't change their behavior very much. There's very little elasticity to price changes in terms of water usage. So why do it, you might say? Well, we believe that the combination of these rates plus some strong intentional steps to make it easier for people to conserve, to get them better informed about how to irrigate, about how to landscape, what the alternatives are, and even about how to self-source irrigation water, which could be a private well, it could be conservation of roof runoff and even gray water usage. So there are options. We think the combination of, let's call it the carrots and the stick, will have will have the best effect. A couple of other things we have put in here. Well, one is that you'll probably want to restate your policy slightly. But another is that there's some specific issues in the way we currently handle billing that we'd recommend be changed. The first is that we build multifamily units typically with a single water meter. So each unit is charged for the rate that applies to the cumulative use of all the units. We recommend that the rate tier be set by the usage of an average unit of each complex, which wouldn't require any changes in plumbing. Just requires a change in the billing system, which we believe is is appropriate when the new meters are installed. Might even be necessary. Second is deduct meters, which many people have who are using town sewage so that they don't get charged for sewer usage when they're using water outdoors and it's not returning through the water treatment plant. We're not recommending changing those in in their operation. In other words, they should still be a way to keep yourself out of sewer charges, which are considerably higher per cubic foot than than water charges. But we are recommending that the billing system be adjusted to combine the indoor and outdoor usage of any household. So that rather than kind of getting the benefit of restarting the rate tiers in each of your two meters, if you have an inside and deduct meter, your rate tier is set by your total usage, as it will be for people who don't have deduct meters. And third is a promise that we'll give you a much more detailed implementation plan and timetable, particularly for conservation initiatives and how we might roll them out when we give you a final report next month. And I think I'm gonna stop there. That was kind of a fire hose version of these recommendations. There is a lot of backup and underneath all of this, there is a rather ornate Excel-based model of what happens to categories, tiers and to total revenues. Categories, tiers and to total revenues, depending on different assumptions about the rate structure. And of course, different assumptions about conservation.
May I interrupt now?
Yes, please. I am all ears.
Can we go back to the slide where you talk about changing the policy? Policies? Why do you suggest dividing the bonded capital?
Well, you've always done that. You've divided operational costs.
Why determine it annually rather than at the time? Of, of the bonding?
Oh, because one of the. Byproduct, positive byproducts of, of what we're recommending is likely to be increased revenues in the water enterprise fund. And if the finance committee and, and you agree. That it's prudent to spend some of those to accelerate. Some of the work that requires capital expenditure and, and even borrowing. Then you could determine, the finance committee could recommend. That some of that excess be applied that way. So rather than it being paid by all taxpayers, it would be paid by water users. Except of course, the water users are pretty much the taxpayers. But in this case, it would say what pocket will that, the, that portion of the capital cost come from?
Personal comment, I think we've got. Ahead of ourselves here. We haven't seen what, in fact, the rate, result of the rates will be. And if it's not what you're anticipating. I don't, I just, I don't see why we're doing that.
Or it may be too soon.
It may be too soon. Yes. A lot of this seems a little soon.
So.
I'm not quite sure I understand the question. Did you say you, you can't tell what the effects would be?
I would like to see the actual effects before we decide to change our policy on how to meet capital costs.
So along those same lines, Steve, this is Kathy. So your rec, the, the task force's recommendations here is a phased approach. And I think one thing we didn't see is. Let's suppose we agreed to increase the rates, like reduce it from six to four rates. And increase it as recommended. How much time do we need to evaluate? The ramifications of doing that before we consider another rate adjustment and or a policy change? Is that kind of getting?
Oh, yes, I was going, working my way backward to that.
Okay. Because I, because you know, I, I personally like the idea of fewer rates. Because if, when running a rated service, you want to cover your costs. But the only reason to really have more than one rate is, is often to drive different behavior. So the fewer rates you have with more differential between them. That is clearly understood by the customers. That all can add up to true behavioral change. So in general, I'm, I, I like where we're going. And I like phasing, so, so that's good. But I do think we need some. Understanding of, okay, let's, let's say we do phase one. How much time do we need to assess whether or not that was successful and had the desired effect? And I, I, I think I'm missing that.
I, I don't know the exact answer, but I have some suggestions. We suggested six months because usage is so heavy in the summer. If you make this change right at the beginning of the summer, first of July. And if we begin the pilot testing of new meters at that point, we'll be able to see. Relatively quickly whether it has what we expect, which is minimal effect on conservation. Now, there may still be, you know, another drought. No one can tell, and therefore there may be voluntary restrictions, which have been relatively well followed by users.
Question for maybe Greg. So let's say the new rates go into effect July, July one. And then people will get their first bill reflecting the new rates when?
So we, we build quarterly.
Right.
So do you in the fall?
So they'll get the new rates, they'll get their new bill in September. Right?
September, October.
Okay. So if they get their new rate, new bill in September, then they notice, oh, okay, I either got a savings or my bill is bigger. That's the end of the summer. And so.
I think you need to have a second.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. I think six months may not be enough time to evaluate. The impact of a proposed rate change that's designed to impact behavior on the summer.
I suspect you're right, particularly because they will only have a couple dozen. Of these new meters in place, which enable people to see what they're actually using much more frequently than quarterly.
Are you making any effort to see that the heavy users get the test meters?
Well, we'd like some of them to use test meters, yes, but I can't tell you who's, who's signed up yet, because I don't know.
Seriously concerned. That people will open their bill, some few people will open their bill and discover that it's gone up enormously. After it's too late to fix anything.
Right. Well, cer- certainly, we're not going to, we're not going to try to surprise them with this. We're going to. The reason we need to, one of the first things we need in informing and engaging people is to reach out to the top. Two or three hundred users. And say, this is the change and just for your information, this is a potential impact. If you used exactly what you've used over the past five years, so that they're on notice. Because without that information, you're right, they, they'll just be surprised and that we don't want.
Wouldn't it be possible, could, could you consider sending out a bill with the calculation?
Like a big bill, a, a, a look ahead.
That could be done. When is the next bill going out, which is for the second quarter, or I should say the fourth quarter?
So I think it will come, next bill, bill will be.
I just got a water.
All right. So.
Today.
So that's, that's a bill that could be targeted for.
Yes.
That could be targeted to the top fifty users to put some information in about this is what's going on.
Yeah, if we're able to keep some player.
Yeah.
If we're able to keep some players on the field from the task force, we could certainly. Draft and you could approve and insert for those bills that does exactly that. It could be customized. Or some, some fraction, small fraction of the users.
A projected bill and also it is a small enough population. We're a small town. We got a lot of, I mean. If, if the timing of the next bill isn't quite right, we can still do that. And, and just send it directly to those fifty people, right? We can.
Yeah, well now, now you're really.
Outside of the timing of the next bill, just to make sure they're, they're given a heads up.
Exactly. I think the way to influence their behavior is not just to make these changes, but to work with them with the changes and. For some of them, it may, you know, it may not be possible to, to do conservation, but I would love to. Have the conversation with them and find out why that would be. Offer them some. Some alternatives. We have greenscapes. We have some information about wells and we can get a lot smarter about private well drilling. Before we have the conversation and we. We know something about the state of the public and private distribution system. And we'll know a lot more when the new meters are installed. So there's, there's a bunch of things that could be in that conversation.
When do you think the new meters would be installed generally? How long? Time, how, how long?
Yeah, let me defer to John. John, if we got the meters up and running in July with a test phase of a couple dozen, two different vendors. What, what do you foresee?
Yeah, it's not very many. And so we have to be kind of choosy on who we'd like to target for those. Especially since it's a summertime installation, so that's where the, where the consumption really changes. And, you know, it's four months, five months, six months at the most, maybe by the end of the year. You've got all of the data and you've also got some opinions about which system you, we're looking at two systems. Which systems people prefer. And I will say these systems are, they're, they're very much state of the art. They have apps. Where you can actually look and see what your water is doing at any point in time on your cell phone. And lots of other, lots of other capabilities, very data-rich applications. So we would probably make a decision. Is somewhere in the first of the year about which particular vendor makes sense. Obviously, you know, all of the things that go into decisions like that, money and everything else. And then start to move toward installing then on, on a broad basis. And the overall cost, which we haven't discussed with anyone, but Chuck. Has money to work with is somewhere between a million and a million and a half dollars. And given the elasticity of. Adaptation to, to conservation. Some of that money could come from a water rate if the water rates were increased and you saw if they were increased the first, just on the first step. It'd wind up probably with several hundred thousand dollars more than you otherwise would. And that could be used and then maybe some comes out of our capital. That has not been discussed, but we are going to speak with the finance committee. On this in June. And get their.
So, so, so in, in other words, the, there is no financing for a broad, yeah, for a broad.
Yeah, exactly what, what pots the money is coming from. That's correct. But what, what did he say? Took about a year or so to put the meters in, maybe a little more? As I recall the presentation, they go through waves, different sections of the town.
Yeah. Yeah, I think a year was, a year was the outside for them because we're, we're under two thousand.
Yeah, it's not a big project for them.
Not a big project for them.
But, but we don't, we haven't got identified funding and some funding from the town meeting and.
That's right. But none, none of this would start, installation would start until, say, the middle of next year. It's still a year out.
So.
But the, the broad ones, the, the, the pilots cost, Chuck says that's a rounding error in his budget. That does not cost much of anything to get the data and make some decisions.
Yeah, and that would suggest at least a year with, with new rates unless there's any kind of. Dramatic reason to change them. Instead of a six-month cycle. I agree.
I think I've heard that the cycles seem a little short. And. I worry that we're not giving the heavy users the information that they would need. To start saving, to start changing their landscaping, changing their practices before they get hit with a huge bill. And that makes me very.
I, I would like to see, it was discussed. We have a historical database of everyone's water usage. Just take the most current one. By these new proposed rates. But, but based on the previous usage. So last year at this time, you spent X. This now is going to cost you this X. Okay, projecting it out.
Right, I think that's what.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to simplify it for me. And then to your point, I don't, I think it's got to be a minimum eighteen months before, because people are going to, if they see. Over the summer, what it looks like now, you want to give them another year, adjust for comparison purposes.
Well, all, all of the data that are in these, in these tables, of course, is based upon real data. All of the, all of the customers, they grouped into various groups, but it's real, they're real numbers.
Question, we had, we had a very, very dry spring. Do we have a sense as to what our water levels are right now?
Our water levels look very high at the moment.
Yeah, yeah, that's interesting. I don't have off the top of my head, but we do have that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure you're right that it's been a very dry spring. Is that?
Been a very dry the past couple of weeks.
Well, yeah, I mean, we didn't get a whole lot of snow in the winter.
And we did get some rain.
Yeah, I suppose. I don't know, maybe.
Something is clearly, gravelly pond, as of Alan Wilson and I walking there Sunday. Is as high as I've ever seen it.
Cool, okay. So that's good. Now, I was, what I was poking at was what is the likelihood? Of us needing to implement conservation mess, measures townwide like we had to do last year. So are we at a higher level than we were at this time last year?
I think we are, actually.
And then we, so there's not going to be any town, not a likelihood of the town having the issue.
It just really depends what happens in June and July.
Yeah, and, and we're not the, we're not the canary in this coal mine. The canary is Hamilton and Topsfield and. Other people who draw out the Ipswich River.
I will say changing the rates in July. Is not going to, it, it'll probably prove the inelasticity of the whole market, which all of the consultants say. People don't change their habits very much with water, even at the high rates, they don't change very much. And I know that, I think you've spoken with a couple of. Couple of people at the high levels, Steve, and they're more concerned about taxes than they are water, to be honest.
Yeah. Generally make the point that this ten thousand dollars of water use, which is trivial compared to their. Six-figure property taxes.
Yeah, and everything that we learn is going to be in the summer. Because of course, in the winter, those people who do tremendous amounts of irrigation aren't using any more water than the average person. So everybody in the winter is tier one, maybe tier two, that's it. Nobody's seeing tier three, tier, the new tier three or two, tier four. That's all a summer, that's a summer event.
Yes, barring leaks, you're absolutely right.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Well, I'll thank you for your time and hope, hope these land. Positively with you and you'll see the rest of the recommendations around and findings around contamination and sources. And other conservation steps in a month's time.
There is, there is one more thing, Steve, that I might add, and that's. The couple of people that will survive this task force in the sustainability group. They're going to be carrying the ball. And some of the things we've talked about inserts into bills. And some of the strategy associated with how all this is going to fit together is going to be those folks. Because this task force will dissolve in the next couple of months.
Isn't it a combination of the DPW and?
The DPW is dealing with probably at least half of the, half of those. They're going forward, but they're not dealing with the conservation details and the, the details of the data that are coming out of. These two pilot studies. Not that they don't have the capabilities, but frankly, their plate is pretty full. And if there's somebody else that can kind of look at that and say, oh. I see some trends here or something there, you know. And then someone to kind of work the PR side in terms of how this is all gets communicated. Those are the folks that are going to be carrying that ball.
Just let's receive it, that. The people who are going to be most effective, affected.
A heads up, a heads up.
This is, this is absolutely right. You're absolutely right. You know, we've spoken to a few, but. Not most of them, and I don't know if they're all in the same.
It's somewhat different too, when you say, oh, your water rates are going to go up than when you get the bill.
Yes.
Right, but that projected bill.
Better off saying, I told you so.
Send, send that to them. That's, that's a very clear indication as to what it might look like and then we don't know. What they're.
And the projected, projected bill could include, for example. Their success at conserving water during the voluntary restrictions last year, because some of them were quite successful. So to contrast, here's your average for ten years, but here's what it was in last year when you restricted your use, so. They, they'd have, you know, guardrails around the possibilities.
The, the, the task force is going to be in place for another.
Couple of months, yeah, I guess.
Could they take that on as a priority, sure, to produce the estimated bills for all of the. Tier four, new tier four customers?
It's a, the model, I. I think the model can generate that by tomorrow. I think the model can generate that by tomorrow.
That would be wonderful. I mean, it's, it's the math, right? You got the, you got the input, you got the rates, it's, it's just math.
We've got everybody's use by household by quarter for the past ten years, so it's all there. Just to be sure, uh, should I use the uh, phase one proposed rates? As a stalking horse here?
No, they're not, they're not radical rates.
I think maybe you ought to use. Your target rather than your first step.
Well, the problem is, is, see, I think as this thing evolves. That target is just a number we kind of picked out of the air.
That, that's pretty intense, yeah.
And we don't know if that's going to be the target in a year and a half, we may say, oh, based on feedback here, that's not where we should be going. We should be at some other number.
Right, I I would recommend using the, the phase one recommendation.
Yeah.
And just say, hey, we're, we, we're restructuring the rates, this is what we're. Planning to implement, but we wanted to give you a heads up, you know, and here's what your new bill would look like if you consume the same amount as. You know, previously. Um, please send your feedback to blah, 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 you know, give them specific instructions to send their feedback to, to go to place. So that then we can learn what the reaction is, and if you get no feedback, then.
Then maybe say something like, we're anticipating to go higher with the upper tiers, but not give a specific.
I I would not go straight for the high term rate stats, because we're not even sure, I think, that we need to go that way.
No, I, 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 yeah, we are.
What I'm hearing.
The uh. Seventy percent of households that use less water. Also pretty easy to generate a guideline that says if your water bill was a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, up to maybe. Five hundred dollars a year. Which would capture three quarters at least of the households, here's what you can expect from these phase one proposed changes. I think for most of them, that would be received as really. Promising.
My experience is that the people who get good news, forget about it, and the people who get bad news, call.
They're not gonna hear it from two thirds of the people.
Gotta do something, team, team has done good work.
In the, in the next month or so. When you come back. We would like to hear that those numbers have been worked out and there's a way to distribute that information to the. Most affected parts of the population.
I, I, we'll do. Thanks again.
This is, this is hard work and and you were.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kudos to John as well.
Thanks very much, Steve.
Prepared this a month ago.
Yeah, so some things have changed.
Can you go over the changing system?
Yeah, um, just on kind of high, high level, uh, so as you know, we've uh, made the switch to regional as of March for us, that's been. Uh, well, well received by the officers, I find pretty smooth so far. Um, some of the things that have been done since then is we have uh, made all the audio and visual connections. For the safe lobbies, the lockdown buttons have been installed. In the police station, I'm not sure about the town hall yet, but we're still waiting on a couple of doors that are going to be shipped on Friday. And we, uh, along us, along with the fire department, went over to the new records management system on, on May eighth. So that's been working out uh, pretty well. Uh, the comprehensive emergency management plan, you should, guys should be on, looking out for an email, I have it uh, on a um. Uh, docu sign, so once it goes down the line, you'll get the email and assign it and bring it back, rather than trying to get everyone together and. And do it all at once.
Love it.
Fine, yeah.
Good job.
But, okay. The advantage of coming together as we can discuss it?
Well, I thought we've, you've reviewed it and, yeah, yeah. Um, the only feedback I've got was from the board of health then, like attended the board of health meeting and answered some of their questions that Martin had, so. Uh, that was the only feedback I got, that's what I said. As you know, Officer Mullin graduated the academy, uh, this one in tonight. Did a very good job. We have one officer remaining in the academy, we'll get out uh, the end of June. And then moving forwards next year, next after July, and next quarter, we'll be looking to finalize our additional hiring with the. Uh, new uh, staff members that were approved in FY twenty three. Looking to complete the safe lobbies downstairs. Uh, we're looking to uh, conduct the active shooter drill with the town of Ethics. Sergeant Luther's just in the preliminary stages of reaching out, trying to get some assistance with that, uh, really through EOPS. And the plans are underway uh, with buy on to start that staffing harbor come. Uh, June, when the school resource officer is back uh, from her duties at the school, and I will be attending some uh. Me and the training in June, uh, it's. It's called CBI training, it's the, the commodity points of distribution, how to set that up and show that. With that. That's what we kind of.
Um, just a- again, really excellent job on the dispatch transition and glad it's working out really well. Yeah, thank you for that. Um, you mentioned you did go live on the records management, so that's good, um. So. If I recall, there's still some. Historical or legacy data conversion that we're going to use the dispatch officers, um, who are still working for us until the end of. The fiscal year.
So that's in process.
Is that in process and?
Sergeant Newton is, is kind of heading that up.
Okay.
You know, working with Chris Ryan at the regional.
Do we have a particular schedule for like completing that or how much? Because once they're no longer available, right? I'm just wondering how we.
So what with, they, the dispatch is the kind of doing now is we have what they call a master name file.
Yeah.
And in the current, the old system, uh, we have duplicates, so they have to go through it one by one and, and delete and merge that uh. That data and that will hopefully, I I'm hoping by the end of the year.
Fiscal year or calendar year?
Calendar.
Calendar year, okay, so. Um, because we're no longer going to have those personnel, who will be doing that type of work is pretty question.
Uh, Sergeant Newton is gonna be, he's, he's the um. He's like the, the point for the new IMC system, and he will be working on that along with.
Um, yeah, because that stuff doesn't get any easier, it's just ugly work and you get a plow right through it, okay? Good for him.
That's kind of right up and down.
Awesome, good, it's up somebody's alley and then keep the spirit, it's, it's important work, important work. Um, last question was, I was really pleased to see some of the training that the officers um, have been undergoing. And um, you mentioned that there was a cultural awareness and diversity training that you thought might be. Beneficial for town employees and. Um, other town employees and perhaps some of the volunteers and. If that's something that can be made available.
Yeah, we talked about that last time, I set to get with Greg, maybe we can discuss it tomorrow at the, yeah, this staff meeting. I can send the link up.
Do you have this information, the training for the, um, your personnel in a, in a learning management system?
Yeah, we will be, we have a system called PMAM and it's, it's, it, it tracks all training, it tracks policies and procedures. I'm look, actually looking into, look at what the rec has, it's called Power DMS. In transitioning that over, because our system now is a little hard to use. And uh, the new system, the Power DMS actually has a phone, so they could get on their. Phone and look at the policies and procedures rated in the road, so. They also, that Power DMS is also uh, owned. By our scheduling management uh, software planet, so we might even be able to get some sort of.
So I was wondering, Greg, if you're, um, if, or, Todd, if you're reporting, um. Uh, if you're track, tracking, um, whether or not officers are meeting their annual training requirements. And whether or not, Greg, that is something you're also overseeing, so we have had some issues in some other departments where. Training has not been conducted as we thought it was, and. You know, I just want to make sure, it sounds like Todd's got a really good system there and. That's something that you should also have access to that high level information, you know, what percentage of the officers have met their. Training requirements for the year and making sure they get done, um, by the end.
They have to, they, 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 all their regular in-service, they, they have to meet that by June thirtieth, because it has to be sent to the new post commission.
Right, so the post helps you with a lot of that, but some of this others training is probably just. Because we want to do the community policing or have a different culture here, and I think, Greg, we just want to make sure that. We're, we're staying on top of, um, helping the officers get properly trained, um. It sounds like they have a really good track.
So when I issue the, the, those training videos from I, that I, I can issue them through that PMA.
And then it tracks it, awesome, that's great, so excellent, really pleased with the way things are going, thank you very much.
No, good job, good, we can, uh, goal we set out uh, last year, that's summer. Uh, I've been exceeded and uh. Just keep it going, that's all, I think it's, it's very pleased.
Yeah, no, I, um. I'm quite happy with the way things are going with the police force and the way you're managing it. I have three questions. Um, first, you've got staffing, how many, how many active police officers are you gonna have adding, adding uh, the two tonight?
So, uh, total after we get the new, new ones hired, we'll have fourteen.
Okay, so you still gotta get.
One.
One more, okay, right, and the number was three, but two of them, these are two of the guys, and the one you added.
Yeah.
Back and changing words. Alright, so you need one more.
So, uh. Sean Mullins was the one that we added last fiscal year to cover the person on one eleven F. David Coe is a new one that's supposed to be FY twenty three, but we had extra money in the budget too.
Okay, alright, good. So this is really supposed to reduce the overtime costs, and I wonder if you could provide to us some point in the near future. What the overtime costs were first quarter? Second quarter, which is not over yet. And third, on a quarterly basis, we should expect to see that number, well, certainly trend down, I don't know where it's gonna go, but it's supposed to go down.
Supposed to go down, and that was the whole plan when I put this together. Uh, so we, we're averaging about one seventy a year in, in overtime costs. Um, but now that we may not have to cover the lobby all the time.
Right.
Uh, and not backfill that position, uh, I see that going down, however. We still have two more to go to the academy, with the, with the new addition of the one more after a red July person. So it, it may be up a little bit in the first part of the next fiscal year, but right after they get back in the academy, I don't see, I see the overtime going away.
Alright, well, as a reference point, it would be good for us to get a quarterly numbers, the finance committee is probably asking you this question.
No, they haven't asked.
Oh, is that right? Okay, well, we're.
I'm assuming they will.
I'm asking, so I'd be interested in that. Um. Question number two has to deal with, we're, we will be embarking on kind of a communications program with the public in general, and I know you have something going. With your coffee with the car, but maybe some other things. It would be good to get. A list of the types of events that you've done over the past quarter, or maybe since the first of the year, would you know? Maybe you could go back and say, yeah, we did three of these and two of these. Uh, I don't know where I'm going with that, but we have to come up with ideas. And anything we can piggyback on what you've got there, and it all contributes to overall communication with the public, and that would be helpful. So that could be done, on, also perhaps on a quarterly basis going forward. Whenever this, this report comes out, you might put that as an agenda when we did this, but either. Uh, third. What's going on with the Western Hot Dog?
Uh, the Western Hot Dog has been uh, followed up on by the, by animal control and we had zero issues since we had that. Uh, hearing and he's complied with everything.
Okay, well, I assume no news is no news.
I heard a thing.
Just haven't heard anything, so.
Yeah, he's inspected everything that, with all the, all the conditions have been followed and she's inspected.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I agree with John, but it'd be nice to have. A part of your quarterly review, um. Including. Both, um, overtime and forced overtime, um, and, and if you could kind of backfill for. The, since last July, so for a back purpose. We'd probably do things on fiscal year. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's easy, I mean, I can pull it right out of the plane.
So we, so we see where, where there are jobs.
Yeah. Okay, summertime, you'll probably see it more than the wintertime.
And, and so that would some be in training.
Yeah, so. I'm hoping, uh, once we get the last person hired, gonna send them both to the academy after the summer. So that way they'll be going in like November and getting out now before. Send them both at once, so then by the next fiscal year, we should be on that, firing unforeseen.
Yeah, let's stop anybody getting hurt.
Circumstances, yes, exactly. But the retention's been pretty good since the new contractor.
So how is the feeling in the force?
I mean, it's overall positive, it's good, uh, very surprised with the regional dispatch. Very well.
What do you need from us?
Uh, another contract.
So, yeah, we hit, this is, we do need to do.
Because this is the year?
So, yes.
Okay, so that is, that'll be on the agenda, at your June meeting.
So our next, yeah, our next meeting review cannot be late, because we're doing this again very shortly to make sure we, um, get the contracts.
I appreciate the support and.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Now. Move on to the fire department.
Yeah, yeah. Are you logged in?
Yeah, I'm in right now.
Greg, is there something in the chat? I see a little red dot.
No, Chuck was. Coming about the gravelly pond.
Okay.
About thirty feet, which is very close to being full.
Awesome, thank you.
Dropkins, you're good to go.
Trying to get rid of this.
Thirty feet is full, we're very close to that.
The screen will be in good shape.
I assume that you would. Get Greg, that, that you would let us know if there were anyone attending virtually.
Yeah, yes.
Maybe somebody let me know this.
Yes.
Yeah, I wasn't wearing my glasses, so I just noticed.
Thank you, folks, I, I've done this in a. In an overview of. I, I did it about three months ago, so some of the data. Has, has needed to be updated since then, um, along with the financial charts that I gave out. Um, however, this morning, when I went to finish the project, for some reason, my computer would not give me access to any of my Excel files. So I will explain to the best I can based on. What I put in here, and then if you have any questions, feel free. So this is a basic overview of what NFPA nineteen ten that covers apparatus. So this is a basic overview of what NFPA nineteen ten that covers apparatus requirements and recommendations. I highlighted a couple of the areas, the yellow area apparatus more than fifteen years old. They only have a few safety upgrades that are required. And consider the value or risk to firefighters keeping fire apparatus more than fifteen year old in first line service or frontline services, we say. In blue, recommended that apparatus more than fifteen year old, fifteen years old that have been properly maintained and are still serviceable, be placed in a reserve status, be upgraded to meet the NFPA nineteen ten standards and incorporate as many features as possible. Every time nineteen ten is updated, a lot of that has to deal with safety. With vehicle airbags, with new types of seat belts, with new types of warning devices. And they can get outdated pretty quickly. And then in green, the final is apparatus that are not manufactured to those specs or that are over twenty-five years old should be replaced. So those are the national guidelines that cover fire apparatus. So our current, yes.
How close are our neighboring towns to following those?
No, no idea. I, I don't know to what degree they hold their standards. There we go. Kermit the Frog is not mine. That's okay. So this is our current apparatus. The year we purchased it, what the vehicle is, when it is due for replacement.
The replacement for the ambulance is twenty twenty-seven?
Yes, that's correct. And this was also outlined in the chart that I believe you all got this, the Excel spreadsheet. Which I'll follow up with that's in here and I can go into a little more detail. Yes, that's on there.
Was in the package.
Yes, good. Hopefully you all read it and if you have any questions, feel free.
And just, excuse me, just on that, the, what was in the package? It was nice. It had the fund apparatus fund balance.
Yes.
So if I read it correctly, we've got enough money to do what we need to do or we don't.
We don't.
We don't. Okay. So that's the part that I was.
We, what, what, what we would have, there, there were two different ones in the packet. One was including squad three and one is if we sold squad three.
They weren't labeled that way. So I saw, okay, I, in the packet I see, I only see one. I only see one.
Okay. Then that was the updated. Then that was the, I eliminated the one that had squad three in it. So do any.
Cause this one looks like this, it's, it's year by year, which is great. The fund balance is always above zero. So that's why I was.
Right. But that, that includes what I did was, and, and I'll get to that if you want to hold off. I can explain what I did. But I just want to run through this because I know you folks had mentioned you wanted to know what we have and what it does.
Okay.
So this is ambulance one. The only ambulance we have currently, this is the basic equipment it carries. It runs on all medical aid calls. Engine one, our primary engine, seven hundred fifty gallons of water, fifteen hundred gallon minute pump. That's all the equipment we carry on that. It carries our primary vehicle extrication equipment, airbags, cribbing, rescue struts, uh, air packs, basic water rescue equipment, saws. So this is, this is our primary toolbox based on our staffing model. This has as much gear as we can safely pack onto it. And again, this was either a demo or a grant purchase as a stock truck. So it wasn't necessarily designed for the equipment. The equipment was fit to the truck.
I have just a second.
Sure.
When you say forty-eight feet of ground ladders, is that?
That's a.
The sum?
Yes, that's a sum. We have a twenty-four foot ground ladder and then a fourteen and then a ten foot attic ladder. And that's the complements of ladders that's carried on the engines.
Can you just a little bit about what an attic ladder is?
Attic ladder is a folding ladder. It's, it's narrow. It's about ten feet. It folds up about this wide and then you open it like this. And it's to get up into attic spout patches or small areas in a building that we couldn't access with any of the other ones. Ladder two, a primary area ladder, five hundred gallons of water, two thousand gallons a minute pump. As you can see, it has a hundred and twenty-three feet of combined ground ladders plus a hundred foot rear mounted aerial ladder. It carries our backup vehicle extrication equipment, more extensive rope rescue equipment and various hand tools. Squad three, two hundred gallons of water, fifteen hundred gallon minute pump, uh, limited hose line, limited ladders and a much smaller complement of tools. And then utility four, in the winter, this serves just as a pickup truck. In the spring through fall, it's also our forestry truck where we put in a skid tank with a pump uh, so that we can go off road. And that carries all our brush fire fighting equipment. Car one, that's my vehicle is the command vehicle, uh, multiple radios on multiple frequencies, four gas meter, a jump kit, traffic cones, my turnout gear and a thermal imaging camera. So some important considerations, the status of ladder two being able to pass emissions. Last Friday afternoon, after power products came and got the truck running in absolute tip top shape, the best it has ever run as verified by their computer and our guys that have driven us, we took it for an inspection and it failed again. It failed the opacity test even worse than the last time we took it before the repairs. And no one has come up with a magic bullet or any other suggestions as to how we will ever get that to pass the opacity test. There were a couple of other minor things that had failed the inspection for, but uh, that is the big one that had is yet to pass. Squad three doesn't function as a full size engine, significantly less space, significantly less equipment, water, hose and everything else. It's called a mini pumper for a reason. It is not a suitable backup for the aerial ladder or for our engine one. So in comparison, a properly equipped department of our size and operating as we do with our staffing should have at least one frontline ambulance. Cause we're an ALS service, one frontline engine, one frontline aerial ladder and preferably one spare frontline piece that can either fill in when one or two of the other vehicles are out for maintenance, or if they're damaged in an accident or something to that degree. Uh, we do have a need for a hundred foot aerial ladder, solidified by the large number of multi-story, single family residents set back from the roadway and proposed new construction, specifically cell signaling and if we were to consider the forty B project. Uh, with our staffing moving forward with four firefighters, we'd be able to respond to calls with both our engine and our ladder, increasing our efficiency on scene with manpower and equipment. Uh, just to recall it, the delivery time for a new fire vehicle is from twenty-four months to forty-eight months if we order it today. And the price increases have not stopped. They're averaging to eighteen to thirty percent more per year. And the example I used was from one of the dealers, uh, from one of the neighboring towns who bought an engine two years ago for seven hundred and twenty thousand and just ordered it last month, the exact same engine and is now nine hundred thousand. And one vendor I talked to, the ladder truck was expecting a six, six percent price increase in April, another six percent in June and another in September. And no one's predicting that this price increase will stop anytime in the near future. There's a potential to sell squad three, as we've discussed several times, the broker has offered us a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. There's a local Massachusetts fire department that also has expressed interest in purchasing the vehicle on that price. Uh, they were actually back in my office again on Friday. Uh, they're very eager to go on it. They have the cash in hand and they would love to buy it from us. Ladder two, we had evaluated three or four months ago. Fire apparatus broker valued it at fifty thousand dollars. We never heard back from the second broker. However, if we were to sell it outright, I'm aware of other departments out of state that would still get the benefit from the low miles and, and the ability to that truck. I estimate around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we'd be able to get for it if we sold it direct as opposed to going through a broker. Is the ladder? Yes, yeah. Originally it was looking at a new midship mount seventy foot aerial platform, which was one point one million dollars stripped and empty. However, the hundred foot units, which we feel we need are in the one point five million dollar range to start. And it costs around twenty-five thousand dollars in hose tools, nozzles and equipment to outfit the truck when it comes. And the reason why that's important is because some of our trucks have never had new equipment. Most of the equipment on the ladder came from the previous ladder. So it's twenty, twenty-five years old and it was fifteen to twenty years old when it was transferred over. Uh, there are demonstrator or spec model trucks coming available soon. Um, engines can range from five hundred thousand and up while aerial ladders start around the eight hundred and fifty thousand. And it varies based on the dealers and the manufacturers. And there are some newer engines out there that are being brokered from small departments with low miles that are maybe uh, two or three years old as opposed to twenty years old that can be purchased for significantly less, but you probably wouldn't get the full twenty to twenty-five years out of them. You would just be able to get them sooner. So the way to re, uh, generate some revenue, still attempting to dispose of ambulance two. At the time we were negotiating with, when we put it out for bid, it was thirty-five hundred. We didn't get any. Uh, time has passed almost a year now and the latest offer from Greenwood is two thousand dollars for the ambulance. So they would be interested in either purchasing it from us or giving us two thousand dollars worth of credit towards any maintenance or repairs on any of our vehicles. Uh, selling squad three, we'd be able to get a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And if, again, private purchase or private sale for ladder two, I believe a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is a reasonable price that we'd be able to get. So if that goal were to be to sell those and return the funds to the fire apparatus fund, uh, we'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and twenty-eight, three hundred and three thousand dollars. These are three of the options that I propose. Um, as you can see, they all involve selling squad three and selling the ladder. It's just how we replace it is primarily the unknown factor or what needs to be determined. So these are the projections that I send out to you folks. And I apologize, I did add in the light blue because I know there was a request for to highlight the year that the vehicle actually showed up. And that was the Excel sheet I could not get to today. However, if you, uh, the red shows the year that we would be making the order or the purchase. The yellow shows when that vehicle should really be in reserve status and not running frontline, which means it should have already been replaced. And the current vehicle would be a backup vehicle. But for the top three vehicles, the second yellow box to the right would be the same year that the, the ordered fire apparatus would actually be appearing with a two-year wait. So with engine one, um, needing to, to be replaced in twenty thirty-one, we need to order it in twenty twenty-nine. And it would arrive two years later. So two blocks to the right of all the red would be when they would be showing up. And I would estimate the same for the pickup trucks and for the command vehicle as well, uh, even though they're more commercial vehicles. Worst case scenario would be two years out because sometimes you can't get model years or, or they get scooped up to be turned into ambulances and then the chassis aren't available. So I have more information about an aerial ladder replacement, but I think that's a good place to start if you have any questions to this point.
So just, um, if I understand the charts correctly, the, the ladder is what we have to make from the, for immediate decision, what, what do we do?
Yes.
And then the other apparatus looks like the next purchase or discussion would be for fiscal year twenty-six.
Right. That would be for the ambulance.
For the ambulance.
Yes.
So right now we deal with a ladder and we should be good for a couple of years.
Yeah. And the way, and the way I arrived at this chart, just so you know, the required capital investment, I just, I took what we would need at the time of purchase and divided it up all the years leading up to that purchase.
So what is the chance in the apparatus fund right now, Greg?
Uh, one point three-ish.
Yeah, I think it's one point one, one, five, and then the two fifty going in would make it one, three, sixty-five. Two fifty what for fiscal next year?
No, what we give in this time meeting.
Added it in. So it's, it's one, three, sixty-five. All right.
Okay, I you're labeling this as FY twenty-four when we need to buy an engine. We can't spend the money. We believe we can't spend the money any month without a time to be booked. So I think you're actually kind of a year. Unless we want to.
Unless you do, unless you do it at the fall special.
Right.
Or I mean, for having a June special, you could even do it then.
Right. And we're going to have it too. I'm going to have, so, um, good question. The deposit for this type of vehicle would be?
Uh, well, I, I talked, uh, one, one of the gentlemen, uh, one of the firefighters has been running the, um, the two groups we have, they're spec, they're specking out fire apparatus and he's made contact with a lot of the dealers. Um, the dealer said that for a one point five million dollar ladder truck, if we had the money at the time of ordering, we could likely get anywhere from a two to three hundred thousand dollar discount. We could get it better priced on the actual truck if we had the money at the time of ordering.
Okay. But what would we actually have to put down as a deposit?
That, that's going to depend on, we, we don't have any real contracts or quotes from that, and that depends on the different vendors.
I just wasn't sure what was customary.
Yeah, it, it, it varies. Uh, and, and the good thing with locking in, uh, you, you're going to get in that rate and then they're not going to be able to increase it on you, which is the benefit to having it.
Um, the chart is, is fascinating, but do you have any factor, you've said that the prices are going up and yet everything stays flat.
Well, that was based on, on some of the ones, because I, I don't know what, it all depends on the make and model. I, I don't know whether you, I sent this out to you. I think I sent it to Greg, but the Fire Chief Association of Massachusetts has a cooperative purchasing program. So they get the stock right. It's a state bid list.
Yeah.
And it just depends on the different manufacturers as to.
I, I, I think what you're getting is the time value of money. No, I'm getting it, but not, no, that's not exactly. Okay. What I'm getting at is, is we have, for example, this, this goes out to FY forty-three. And I'm sure the prices are going to go up between, and, and we should be planning to spend more, put more money in. Yes. So.
If you look at the rest of the ladder replacements, forty years out from now.
It's two point five million in twenty forty-one.
But in.
Obviously that's a guess.
In twenty thirty, which is the last plausible date in, in we just thinking about what we're going to be doing in twenty forty seems. No, but this is good. I mean, we asked them to look ahead and, and I, I, I'd like the chart a lot. And what I think though is it's good information for perhaps the finance committee to, you know, help apply the.
Whatever assumptions you want to use.
Assumptions as to how much cost will increase, time value of money and all that stuff. They could take this and and or even Andrea, you know, could take this, and and I think it would be very helpful information. Um, I guess, um, the question I have is tonight. Are we having a conversation about deciding what to do about the ladder truck? Is that what we expect to get out of this meeting tonight?
To me, that's the priority of making a decision. And I think the chief would agree.
Yeah, the ladder truck's priority and and doing something with the squad.
So so what to sell?
Yes.
What to sell and what do we, what do we do about the ladder truck?
Yes.
That's what we need to get done.
What do we need to sell first, and then what are we gonna buy to replace it?
For all, everything on this grid, we must be running a little bit behind. The capital investment per year is always a little bit more. For your purchase, and then after that, the number goes down for every single one of us. Because we're not keeping up with whatever the whatever the capital needs are for. Okay.
Yeah.
So here's, here's where my thinking is on the ladder truck, because I'm looking at that, and by the way. I I am interested in data, how many, how many calls that ladder truck has been out, say, in the past three or four years? I know the last eight months.
So.
Been anywhere.
So so I, so I went back and I did some research, and and like, like anything, there's, there's good data in there and there's bad data.
Yeah.
So the ladder truck hasn't run for nine months because it's been out of service. For the last year and three months before that. We had a call force that wasn't coming back to calls, and we had firefighters not coming back with calls. So with the ladder truck running additional, the amount of time it ran during those periods were minimal. The only times it did run were reported animals stuck in the tree, chimney fires, and specialized rescues. And that's because with three people.
That's all you can do.
That's all we could do. We could take one truck or the other. And when the engine goes to most of it and no one's coming back to take the second truck. That's why I mentioned at the beginning, when our staffing going up to four, we're able to take both trucks, so the ladder truck's going to get used. At a regular response to a house fire or a fire alarm activation now, where it hasn't been because we didn't have the staffing to do that.
And and I guess it goes out, like, my question is. Um, so how many of those calls are to go out that really it was equipment that needed to go on that call? If it was a tall tree and there's an animal up the tree, I guess I could understand.
That could be, that could come from elsewhere. That is not a time priority.
No, it's not, but if it it's part of the aerial ladder replacement program that I have here, I answer some of those.
Okay. Well, yeah, he- here's my thinking, whether there's a ladder truck or not, there has to be a vehicle in that slot. Otherwise, you got one pumper, and that's it. Squad is gone, ambulance is gone, you got three hundred thousand bucks for that, so you got some money. So the question is, is do you fill that slot with another pumper? Because we just don't have a lot of high stuff, or do you get a ladder truck? So the cost on that slot is not one point five million, it's a difference between one point five million and a pumper. Which is like, well, I don't know the number here, six hundred thousand today?
It's more, no, according to the issue, it's more like seven fifty.
Would that be, I I, well, I see nine hundred in twenty twenty-nine, maybe today it's seven fifty.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's, that's the differential I'm looking at, that I'm saying, is this worth it? To us.
So as we look at um determining what we need. Historical information is really helpful. However, given the lead times on these equipment, we do wanna plan for the future. And so I do think taking into account the cell signaling complex. And the likelihood of that big apartment building on Shingle Hill becoming a reality, I think we've got to figure that into the equation. Um. But also, if we decide we do need a ladder truck for those reasons or for the big homes we keep building. Um, must it be new, or what is the likelihood of getting something that's five years old, you know, or? Demo, whatever you, so those were my thoughts running.
Yeah, those are definitely, those are definitely options, and if maybe, maybe it'll answer some questions if I run through this. Um, ladder presentation really quick, so you can, it'll explain some differences if I can get. Back up on the screen. So the aerial ladder we're talking about is called the Quint. It has a pump and a tank like a pumper, and it also has an aerial ladder on it. So it's a dual function. So currently, our ladder two is a quint, which means previously anytime engine one was broken or out for repairs. We could run the ladder in its place because it still has water and hoses, and that's what we'd be looking to replace. So there's two different types. The top two are called an aerial platform. It's an aerial ladder with a bucket on the end. The two bottom ones is a different style that's called a straight stick or a straight aerial ladder. And as you can see, the two on the bottom, one has a single rear axle and one has a double rear axle. The aerial, and and they have different functions. The aerial platform gives you a much more stable platform to work off of in the bucket. When you're venting a roof, whether you're making a rescue, whether you're doing something over an embankment. Um, it's much more versatile for an aerial platform than it is for the straight aerial ladder. But those are the types that are out there, and all four trucks pictured are quints right there.
Maybe what's the variability in cost for them in general?
Um. They can run right around the same.
Oh, they're all pretty much the same.
Yeah. Another consideration. As you can see in all these, is the jack spread or the jack situation. And these are the stabilizers that heat keep the truck from tipping over. So the two up on the left are what they call A or angle. They come out from underneath to the side, and then you see some of the other ones that are more square. They come out and drop straight down in the lower left. They have the ability to pick the truck right up off the ground. For complete stabilization and doesn't rely anything on the wheels. You can walk under those. They're that, they're that safe. So that's another consideration as to widths of streets, parked cars. Um, the two on the upper left, you'll see in a lot of the inner cities. Because they can go under parked cars and still stabilize. The the bigger ones are where you have a little bit more room. Because the jack spread comes out farther, and if there's a car parked there, there's gonna be a problem, and that does happen. Some statistics, new homes are almost thirty percent larger than was being built prior to two thousand and nine. And if you consider we bought the aerial ladder in two thousand and one, and you folks know the large number of mansions here in town currently. A typical twenty fifteen construction, three stories, twenty-four hundred square feet. Nobody's building twelve hundred square foot ranches. The ISO rating, which infect, uh, which affects the fire insurance rating. They say responsive areas with five buildings that are three stories or thirty-five feet or more, or have five buildings that have a fire flow greater than thirty-five hundred. Should have a ladder truck. So this lends to the credibility of getting a ladder truck instead of a second pumper. And to receive the highest points in that evaluation, the ladder must reach the roof of the tallest building in its service area or be a hundred foot long. And what we're looking is to reach the tallest buildings, which will likely be cell signaling and or the forty B. And all the ones we're currently looking at are a hundred foot, so they meet it either way. And they help meet the need of where we're going. This is just a little thing about what we use the ladder truck for. Lightweight truss roofs, which is the primarily all the new construction, all the manufactured lumber. Are are failing a lot quicker, and that's why we need this stable platform. We don't want to be up on the roof on ground ladders. An FPA fire protection handbook, these are the recommended of what you should respond to these different types of occupancy with. Um, as far as the number of apparatus. Now, we don't have a hospital, nursing home, or a high-rise yet. We do have a school. They recommend four pumper's, two ladders. Medium hazard apartments, offices, mercantile, which we do have, three pumper's, one ladder. And low hazard, one, two, or three family dwellings, at least two pumper's and one ladder truck. Some of this we currently make up by mutual aid response. But this is what the recommended are for those types of buildings. And if we're able to get a pumper and a ladder there ourselves, we're getting it there that much quicker and getting it into operation that much sooner rather than waiting for mutual aid. Another consideration with the ladder truck, older homes with limited access. Some of you folks know this. Long winding driveways with trees, the ones set up on hills. The ones that have the circular driveways in front, but the house is three hundred yards back. And some that have access issues because the back of the house is actually on the water, and we can't even get to it. Expansive roofs with multiple pitches. Again, you brought up the number of uh feet of the ground ladders on the engine. Um, that's good for about the second floor of a single-family colonial. Anything above that, we can't hit with ground ladders unless we have three or four people raising the ladders and the ladder truck is there. And it takes one firefighter operate and position the aerial ladder. So you don't need three firefighters putting up a ground ladder. He can set up the truck and use the aerial ladder by himself to set it in place. Extremely multi- multi-story homes, three, four, and five stories, and those are single families. Limited access in the winter, unplowed driveways and built up snowbanks, can't get the the ladder truck, the trucks close enough. Um, some of the mutual aid ladders from communities, depending upon the volunteers, so so not only is it. A fifteen-minute response once they're on the road, but it may be ten minutes before they have a crew to respond in it. Now we're talking the ladder trucks not getting there for twenty or twenty-five minutes. We talked about the new proposed commercial and residential construction in excess of seventy feet. And again, this ladder truck is both a pumper and an aerial ladder. Some of the justifications. Access on the left, third floor. Our engine does not have a ladder on it with a crew of three that will reach that third floor. As you can see, there's no driveway for the the top row middle, the the duplexes. The other ones on a hill, no real access. We ran into that at the fire at Old Essex Road. The size of some of these houses, being able to access in the middle bottom a chimney. From the driveway or from the street, based on the layout of the house. Houses on the top are not unfamiliar here. A lot of different pitches on that roof, and how do we get up there? The one on the right resembles the one on Old Essex Road, almost to a T. And this is why we need the aerial ladder, because you're not gonna get a ground ladder anywhere near that, or you're gonna need so much manpower to do it, you'll never reach it. And that's the benefit of an aerial. Thank you.
I wish we had a lot of more of that material in your pockets. It's an awful lot.
I'll be happy to resend it to you, but again, this has been a work in progress, so as I've been able to get new information.
And what was sent?
I thought I had sent the whole presentation.
They've been in previous packages.
Okay. I knew I had sent it, so.
This is new stuff, I don't think.
Not all of this, no, no, the last whole pack about the uh about the ladder justification, it just comes to fruition because of the uh. Question about the current aerial ladder.
Well, this is available. These, this presentation.
Yeah, oh yeah, I can email it.
Okay, that's good.
Yep.
And I would like that supplemented with just some comments about the last. Well, you've been here three years, but I don't know, maybe there there's information, say, five years, on ladder usage. I just.
It it it's the story. It's based on how our software is, it's not tracked very well. I did go back several years, um, because I knew that was the request. But but there was not much in there to to verify it one way or the other, unfortunately.
Uh, no, I think, I think that that that's important, the uh, trying to wrap my head, not what I've drawn. Uh, trying to justify one point five million dollars. For uh, something that is accused occasionally, and we can't remember when used in the past. Well, I would think that, I don't know, just my point.
Yeah.
We had to use in your package last, in your presentation to the uh, cream com, we were the joint board. Yeah, fourteen, I think fourteen hundred twenty-five uh calls. Of which eighteen were fires.
Yep.
Okay, and I believe ten were structures.
Yep.
Okay.
That sounds about right.
Think that you, with only ten structure, fires, structures, you remember, one would remember which one required a ladder.
Well, this is.
You know, I'm saying that one might, we needed this ladder, okay? We, you may have used a ladder, but was it required, I guess, is the point.
Right, well, the, if if you, if if you remember, we don't necessarily base. We we base what we need on the potential of needing something.
Okay.
And with the increased staffing. It will be running on every call the engine goes on. It will be running on motor vehicle accidents on the highway with the vehicle extraction equipment. To better block the roadway than the engine can to give us highway safety. Plus, we'll be able to get it and deploy it at more fires because it's actually on the road. As you see what the other, and I mentioned this before, what the other communities run. It goes every time an engine goes. Every time there's a fire alarm activation, it's thought of that could be a potential fire. Right now, we have enough staffing to bring the engine. When we're up to full staffing, we'll be able to bring the engine and the ladder. And it gets it there sooner to get it into position in the event that we need it.
And just my other question, and then, sorry, sorry, isn't. Uh, Gloucester, Beverly, do I both have ladders?
Yes.
Okay, so the, do I direct neighbor to the north, and I direct neighbor to the south?
Right.
Okay, we have ladders, okay.
Right, but I, but I will point out Gloucester's ladder is coming from the central fire station.
Okay.
All the way and down the center of Gloucester, and the same for Beverly's, that's coming all the way from the upper end of Hill Street by Cabbott Street.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um, just, I, I hear the conversation and agree with you that in today's world. Not a hundred percent convinced we need a ladder. However, in tomorrow's world, I think we do. Because of cell signaling, because of the apartment, because of the potential for adding elderly housing, which we have talked about as part of the zoning changes. Um, that I imagine something is going to go through regarding elderly housing. So I just feel like we need to think a couple of years, few years out. Um, and when I do that, I think we're going to need it. I'm not clear on exactly, but, and I would like to avoid paying, you know, one point five million. That's why I'm trying to understand, you know, if we sell the one we've got, someone wants it, get the money for it, right? That's kind of a no-brainer. We got some sitting in the, in the garage we can't use, and we can get some money for. Brainer decision we should talk about tonight. But just on that, and that lowers the cost of getting a replacement ladder, which might be slightly used. As opposed to brand spanking new, we probably don't need a brand spanking new. Um, but is there an opportunity to get something that also lowers the cost? So I I basically, I think we could get a new, a ladder truck for less than one point five that services.
You can't, yeah, you can't use that ladder truck at all. I mean, everything functions on it.
Yep.
It just doesn't. So, oh yeah, so in effect, your backup pumper is the squad car.
No, we don't even use that. We we have a, we have, our backup pumper right now is a reserve engine from Boston. That Beverly borrowed for the past year, that we borrowed from Beverly, and it's sitting next to the fire station. So if engine one, when engine one went out of service, the Boston engine goes in.
That's my question. You you've got to have two pumper's that are kind of functional at all times.
Well, either two pumper's that are functional or a quint aerial ladder.
Two things that can pump one.
Yep, exactly, so, exactly.
Yeah, alright, and so we we've had this rental or borrow deal for months.
Yes, because we've had the Boston piece, and before that, we had the engine from Linfield until they needed it back.
Okay, I I understand these, these things.
You know.
Different, uh.
No.
Is there more borrowing going on now than historically?
Well, our, part of, part of the reason more is is going on now is because the weights for trucks. Because people have trucks going out of service, or they're ordering them, and then their other truck breaks, and now they have nothing, and their their replacement truck's two years out. So there's a lot of that going on.
This is not uncommon, what we're doing right now.
No, 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 and and we wouldn't have gotten it because Beverly's had borrowed it for the past year because they were waiting for their new engine to come in. So, yeah, it's, uh.
Alright, well.
Hopefully, there's a good network.
I'm just wrestling with the cost differential here. A ladder cost us a thousand dollars a week. You could just do the math on one point five minute. Over twenty years, it's a thousand bucks, and a pumper costs six hundred dollars. And that's the differential. And that's the differential. Because you got to have some vehicle there, whether it's a pumper or a ladder, you got to have something there, so it's not the whole one and a half million, it's something less than that.
Yep.
And so I'm just kind of getting my.
We can close that gap.
However, if you look at it.
Sell sell ladder two.
And as much, as much as they're both pumpers, the engine cannot replace the aerial ladder. No, no. Specific functions, it has rescue functions, and that's that's how we look at it, it's it's a different specialized tool that helps us to do our job.
I could wrap my head around one point one, one point two. Okay, I don't know what, I don't know what the numbers, I don't know why the one point five is.
Well, I can show you, I I.
No, no, I'm just saying, this is this.
Oh, no, no, but like, right here, you want real numbers, like a. A mid-range hundred and two foot rear mount platform is one point five five three. If you wanted one point one, you get a seventy-nine foot.
According to NFPA, they want us a hundred.
Hundred, that's that's what we're going to need to base, because a seventy-nine footer won't get us to the top of the new cell signaling building.
So what about demos or use?
Yeah, that's what we have to look for, I mean, we're waiting, we have a, we have a demo coming on the twenty-fourth. Uh, it's a Sutphen, it's already, it's already purchased, but that will show us. That that's a good visual of what an aerial platform is and what it does.
So so the likelihood of finding. An appropriate vehicle that's not brand new.
Um, yeah, there'll be some spec trucks out there, they're just not in yet, the the vendors are waiting for the trucks.
What's the, what what is your best guess as to the time?
They have no guess, they're they're still waiting from the manufacturers, they're on order and.
So what if.
Could be, two months, could be six months.
Almost two years, which is what we earlier knew.
Yep.
Listening, listening to you and thinking, okay, we we spent the one point, we put aside the one, the one point five. And we don't get anything for two years, and you made a very good case that it's something that we need to have. Um, I just don't, I'm. Find something used, find the demo, find something so that we have a truck. So rather than later.
Yes, so so what about this, what if we, from just from a logistics standpoint? We could vote tonight to sell ladder two, which is sitting useless in our garage right now, we can get some real money for that. We could take some sort of a vote to. Um, put forward a warrant on the next town meeting. For an appropriation of a either new or used ladder try, you know, like we did with the ambulance, right? We weren't committing to buy something new, but it was just a not succeed, right? Is there anything else?
Only one question, a little, what do we have, weren't we going to, what happened to the uh? The transport. Idea, taking.
Take ambulance to turn to a.
Yeah, that's still, that's still a process, yeah, oh yeah, no, that, yeah, no, that's, that's just putting cap, it's taking two air pack things out of engine one. Still getting bids.
Okay.
On the different types of cabins, so we've sent the dimensions into a couple builders and. Um, whether they are going to install it or we're going to install it ourselves is the other, the second half.
So so I make a motion to sell ladder two. I'm sorry, I thought it was ladder.
Ladder, ladder two and squad.
Ladder two and squad three.
Second.
Uh, both of them in one shot here.
What's the value of keeping squad three?
So that's a second pumper, you never valued it as a.
No, we don't, you, right now, it's a chase vehicle for the ambulance.
All right, then, yeah, that's history.
We don't need that for advanced life support, we can suit that a squad three.
We're going to make engine one the advanced life support.
The engine has more room to carry than the engine.
Right. So I'm, I I move to sell ladder two and squad three.
Okay, second, that, three strikes, you're out with the ladder, you haven't passed for what, a third time, right?
It's like fourth.
Oh, a fifth time.
Yeah, whatever, I've lost track, unfortunately.
This is, there's no way to do with the great. Um, entry and.
For the ladder?
Yeah.
You could. However, it's the aerial ladder component and all the other components that are going to age out in two years.
Okay.
Anyway, and it would have, so if you'd spent a hundred thousand dollars for a new motor now. We wouldn't be using it two more years from now because. It'd be the aerial ladder component, the the hydraulics, the jacks. Uh, and it would have to be almost total rebuild.
At the same price when it was a new one, on a yearly basis, for fifty thousand a year.
Yeah. Thousand a week.
Okay, we have motion on second, just there in further discussion.
Could I just ask a question with respect to that, would that, would you need to vote to have that money? Go back into the fire apparatus fund as opposed to going into the general fund, or does that require a vote at town meeting?
Can this all be done in June? Whatever's going to happen with the school deal?
Yes, okay.
Okay. And but also we would have to have a vote on getting a ladder.
Yes.
Okay, all that can all be done one shot.
Yes.
Okay, or separate articles.
And how much money do we want to spend?
Well, I don't think we need, I think we have plenty of time to talk about this. That we could, maybe we could have a discussion at the next select word meeting on wording for. The next town meeting.
And if you could get a sense of. What's up there.
But in the meantime, we've got stuff sitting around, just rest, gonna rest, and the longer it sits there, the less money we'll get, so we can sell it. Let's, let's.
They're both very viable trucks to somebody else right now.
Somebody, we can help somebody else. I would just say separate the two conversations, our next conversation could be about what to buy and kind of freeze the stuff in the town meeting tonight.
Tonight, when you're moving to sell.
Sell vehicles. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? John.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Should you have put the ambulance in that, or is that a rounding error?
Well, you've already approved.
We already approved, I think we.
Yeah, I think we did that.
All right. Fire sale, exactly.
Sale.
Bring back building.
Okay, so the action is for the next meeting. To have that future oriented wording for what we think we want to do at the next town meeting.
Okay, that's vehicle replacement, now we talk about staffing. I still like the presentation.
Oh, certainly, yeah, no, that's on my list, and the ladder summary.
You'll, you'll all get it.
A clarification.
I will make sure you get that.
Okay.
With respect to staffing, firefighter Doobie and firefighter Peter started the fire academy May first. So they will be graduating July fourteenth. Um, our newest to be hired Shane Stevenson. Um, he will be starting on June eleventh. Um, he will be testing for his paramedic in July. And hopefully will get certified as a paramedic in July, and he's slated to go to the fire academy in August. From August eighth to November eleventh.
So he fired somebody who's either a paramedic or a firefighter.
Yeah, because he's eighty-five percent through paramedic school. And he will be completed and became highly recommended, he scored top on our assessment panel and. Four of our current firefighter paramedics have all. Worked with him in the EMS field and have. Given great recommendations for his skills, he's worked in another very busy system. So he should have no problem passing his paramedic. Uh, and then there are two conditional offers out there right now, they came back, they they both accepted the job, these are for the two new positions after July one. Um, one is a paramedic, the other one is a firefighter one-two, call volley academy EMT. Um, they're already in the process of scheduling their NFPA physicals, and then they will take the physical agility test. Um, once I have that paperwork, I can schedule them for the academy. So likely if they were both, or one or both of them were to go to the full-time academy, it would probably be in the fall. Uh, probably October, November, which would put them back on shift December or January, and that would bring us up to four shifts at four. Now, one of them is a firefighter one, firefighter two, so after he does his two or three weeks of daytime orientation, he can immediately go into the rotation and work. Because he has the fire certification, he will still need to get his paramedic certification. In the event he can't get into paramedic school until the spring or next summer, depending upon how busy the schools are, then he'll be sent. To the fire academy before he goes to paramedic school because he can't do both at the same time. If he were able to get his, get into paramedic school in January. We would forego the fire academy until he finished paramedic school and then send him to the fire academy. Because he can't miss any days of paramedic school and he can't miss any days of the fire academy and they can't run at the same time. But he will be able to go into the rotation, so. He will not cause overtime, he won't be a trainer, other, a trainee other than the two weeks that. Two or three weeks that he's doing in-house orientation. So there is some flexibility with him.
He's in paramedic school, he can still do the shifts.
Yes, yes, yeah, he'll still be able to work on shift while he's in paramedic school as long as the day his shift doesn't conflict with the day, and then he'll just be off that day. And just assign a different.
So actually. Best hold off is fire training, until we have all the others back from the academy.
Yes. Yeah, so we'll see, because I don't know when the others are going to completely come back, because I don't know when the other paramedic is going to be graduating from the academy. I may be able to get him into a summer academy itself. But he's variable on that, so we have some flexibility with him.
So the challenge is those first couple of weeks of July.
Yes.
Right, so it's hard, it's it's impossible to keep reality without having overtime.
Overtime, it's it's got to be, yes.
So we've been budgeting very much overtime. Next year, with the assumption that we would have. The staffing. The backfill.
But there's already more vacation on the books for July than there is for June right now.
So any, any takers on switching some vacation time?
Not as of yet.
So we're going to run into the same problems, in terms of burning through overtime. Real fast, unless we are okay with going down to two in those first two weeks.
So I'm not okay with going down to during what I would call our busy season. It was the dead of winter. Um, with the brush fires we've already had in the area. That being July fourth week, that's what's making me really uncomfortable, if we were talking about a different time of the year. I I think I could be comfortable, but I'm not.
And I know that tends to be the biggest hit on the police department over time as well, starting the year is the first week of July.
So we have to pay them some money. At the next town meeting.
Jen.
I think the concern is we thought we would have fully trained firefighters, right?
And and we hired people as we want.
Right, so I guess we need to revisit. Or I should say, I think we need a better understanding of why we are not hiring full-time firefighters. I, personal, I need a better understanding of why we can't hire people who are full-trained when other towns seem to be able to do that. But.
That's not entirely correct.
Okay, it's not correct.
No.
Everybody's doing this?
Yes, there are people scrambling to hire people, I think Gloucesters had four openings now for six months that they haven't been able to hire.
What were you going to do, I mean, July fourth is a, is a busy time. And how is the staffing going to work on that day anyway with just two guys? I mean, doesn't somebody have to be some, well, someone's going to be in the parade, I guess, but I, um. But, you know, there are firework events, fireworks, I don't know.
No fireworks this year.
So that's.
Oh, if it was fireworks this year, we'd be, we'd be calling in outside fire departments for that like we did last time.
All right, so that's not.
No. And we don't have to staff the parade the same way the police does, it's just the on-duty staffing for the regular calls.
Yeah.
There's increased boat traffic, we could end up on the boat, there's all kinds of different things that happen. The the public safety boat, with all the extra boats out there in in, you know, for water emergencies and things like that, we we go on those for medical emergencies and stuff too. So that's just another. Realm of services we provide, so as much as there's foot traffic in town, there's boat traffic down. So there's a lot of potential draw on emergency services this capital. But once the two firefighters come back, June fourteenth, we'll have four shifts of three and a floater. So we'll be back to the floater helping to decrease any of the overtime at that point as well, which we haven't had for a while because. Two firefighters that left.
Great, do you have any brilliant ideas, because? If we spend all of our overtime in the first two weeks of the fiscal year. If.
We're going to go through a big chunk. You you either drop down or you, or we appropriate more dollars. Those are, those are really your two choices. Kind of dollars. Um, well, minimum of twenty.
Twenty thousand, twenty.
So those those first two.
We're looking at spending somewhere between ten, I think, and ten and fifteen. The two weeks or per week, the two weeks. And that's out of the thirty-five.
So, so, yeah, so we can't use reserve to cover that?
Yes, you can.
We have plenty of reserves, we have that discussion.
But we can't spend that.
No, I know, but the finance committee. So is this worth a conversation like you suggested, Anne, with the finance committee? If if we give them direction that we prefer. Not to drop down the staffing or. You know, what would they recommend as far as funding the financial hole?
Yeah, and I, you know, my sense would be. That we would say, let's see how the rest of the year goes. But but I think it's smart to have the conversation ahead of time.
Right. Yeah, just give them a heads up, because we are talking about the next fiscal year, right? And. We're not talking about overspending the entire budget, but you're spending it ahead of what we would plan, just have that conversation.
You want to make that keeps.
We need to reschedule because there was.
And they had asked for a quarterly review of the overtime picture anyway, if I recall.
Yes.
So this could be the first discussion, what do we do, because we're already, our hiring projections were off.
Yep.
The only other thing I'd like to update you on is with respect to the public safety boat. I've been working with Bayon, Bayon was able to secure a grant from Marine Fire Pump. And the fire department has since bought the suction hoses, the hoses and the monitor nozzle to go with it. And we're in the process of getting that pump installed on the safety boat. So we will actually have firefighting capabilities on the water for. Residences that are close to the water that we can't normally reach from that side, so. That will materialize along with some training over the summer, but it's getting ready to be installed very soon, so. It was a pleasure working with him and it's good that we can. It was a pleasure working with him and it's good that we can. Finally, I have something to protect the twenty million dollars of floating assets. So kudos to Byon for. Doing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks. Yeah.
Next. There's a proposed flag policy. This version of flag policy. We discussed it. When you were gone, yes. With a lot more. Redundant information about how flags should be displayed, which is all covered through the various codes. The. Intention of this one is to give us coverage. In case some. Organization comes to us and says, we want our our flag number four. Would the.
Because which. A good direction. Consistency with the Boston decision. And having it as a. It's 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 government speak, if you will, speech. Rather than just general public speech. So that's that's the real distinction you want to make. You 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 put up flags that you approve as official. How how actions. So requests come before you and then you approve them based on that basis.
And we have. General policy of having. Two readings of policies, but in the case of an emergency, we can comply with one. And. I am going to argue that this is. We don't, we need to have. A policy in place when we fly fly up. So I would like you to consider. Approving this.
I think the policy was extremely well written. And I can't, I'm just think it was very well done and I would be happy to. Get this done tonight.
I have a couple of caveats. So, you know, I spent some time on the internet looking around here and there aren't very many towns that have flag policies. Subsequent to the subsequent to the Boston decision. There are only a handful out there that have done that. And the decisions to do that are pretty much split down the middle. I found several towns that say, we're not dealing with any flags. Just the US flag, that's it, and the POW flag. There were several towns and just looking in 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 Massachusetts, I looked elsewhere, but primarily Massachusetts. Also a similar number that said yes. In other words, they both put up commemorative flags. They weren't really very specific about it. And then there were a similar number of towns and in all of these instances, about four or five towns in each one of these pots. There was said, yes, you'll put up a flag. But it has to go on a separate flag pole. We're not. Co-mingling it with US flags. And then there were a few towns that. Town managers, town town administrators had sent notes to their their council, their select board to say, you got to deal with this. And these are notes that went April twenty-sixth, May third, I mean, I mean, the last two weeks. They they're busy working on policies, but they don't have it have anything in place. And in all of those instances, the town town managers said. I don't think we should have any 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 flags anywhere because it just it. Sucks up time, it's it's a little complex. My perspective is that the way. This is written, I'm I'm in in general in favor of allowing outside groups. We've only had LGBTQ at this point, the pride flag. And in fact, that has been the driver for much of this in in most towns, that's been the group. But everybody knows there are other groups that could perhaps perhaps approach. But I'm I'm in favor of considering whatever groups may come down, whether they're event-driven or cause-driven or they're just special groups. Based on this government speech sort of sort of thing. But I want a separate flag pole. We are in kind of a unique position in that our flag pole has more or less been adopted by the memorial that is out front. And there is one town in Massachusetts that had a similar kind of challenge and just said they've got a separate flag. And most towns do, and in fact, in Boston, there were three flag poles. That were out there, one had the state flag, the one that had US flag, the one that was for the commemorative flags, and you know, they had hundreds of those that went up over the years. Until this Christian group put up the flag, that went on a separate flag pole. There was no flag pole in Boston. That had a US flag or a state flag and also the commemorative flags, it was a separate separate pole. So I would be in favor of modifying this a little bit, saying we put up another flag pole somewhere out here. And that that would be available for commemorative flags. I think furthermore, we need to define what our flag poles are in this town. We just say we've got flag poles. I think we ought to say we've got one here, we've got one at Tuck's Point, we've got one at the fire station and.
Five or six.
Have we got one there?
We identified them last.
We identified them, yes, and. Most of them are. Not lighted. And flags fly.
Which is not right.
Which is not right. And nobody cares. And. The half-staff.
At least like in cemeteries, maybe.
The the flagpole at Tuck's is not lighted, the flagpoles in the cemeteries are not lighted to the best of my knowledge. The flags are flown at half-staff. At the police station some days and out in front other days, and there's no coordination. And that's not a happy situation, but there's nobody in town who is responsible, in no no employee who is responsible for this. Previous policy said that the police chief was responsible, but the Legion took over and so.
Yeah, and and so they deal with that, somebody.
Yeah, we are, oh, to their own roles.
So so I I. I think we need a policy. And the issue of how it is implemented and holding people accountable. Is is a little bit different. I think that we should not have a policy that cannot be. Where we can't hold someone. Accountable, so if there's some logistical reason why it just doesn't make sense to have a flag pole somewhere. And you know, that's that's one discussion, but I think we just. We need to set the policy and Greg needs to assign an employee to deal with the flags and then we hold. That employee and Greg accountable. I feel like they're different. Slightly different, I don't want I don't want that accountability issue to get in the way. Of us having a good policy, I guess.
I guess what what I would argue at the moment, oh, I understand the desire for a second flag pole. Um, I think if we had a second pole, then we could modify the policy. But I think. Given that we have agreed to have a commemorative flag, well, sorry, for the month of June. We ought to have a policy that fits with our current.
Then we can modify the policy.
If if going forward, if we have another pole, then we can modify the policy.
We're gonna put that on the agenda now.
Well, we can, we should take an action to to. To 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 discuss what are the poles we want to have. And because maybe there's some we don't want anymore if they're not being properly. Maintained properly, you know. The, so I think the discussion of what poles we have or should have should be a separate discussion and we can take an action of that, that that's. Okay, so that makes sense.
In the interim.
And then we fix this policy.
This this policy, I think this policy as written.
Gets us through.
Gets us through. The next. Year. Or so. And we can. Someone can fix it. Okay, so. Okay, unfortunately. The forgotten is if Mr. Round proposed something that he doesn't approve of.
Yeah, I I I I want something more solid than just, we'll do it some point in the future. That's not good enough. And I'm just. Trying to figure out how to. I mean, maybe there has to be a phrase that that, you know, that that commemorative flags will be flown. That the current until such time as. Another flag pole.
So we can we can amend the. Policy at time, right?
Yeah, like now.
Well, we can we can adopt the policy as written. And the action committee will discuss what we're going to, the action.
Well, see, that's that that's not good enough for me.
Okay.
I want to say something in writing right now.
In that case. Is there someone else who would like to make a motion?
Well, Greg had a.
Well, I was gonna say that you approved the policy, basically as written now, and I have a second motion that says. Instructing me through staff to erect a new pole. Over the next. Few months.
Okay.
At such time. Put a timeline on it.
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah.
That's that's the direction I'm gonna go, and then. You know.
That would be, that would be okay. That would be okay, if we we can do that. I mean, it's good to find some spot out here on the common, I think that.
Yeah, delegate, delegate staff to work with John to pick a spot for a new flag.
Fine. Well, I I would defer to the DPW or somebody. This is, this is what makes sense. But I think that's what, that would be, that would be okay with me. I'm just looking for other. Notes here, because some of this stuff you've taken from Oregon's.
So most.
Oregon's assumption or template.
Most of this came from Hamilton, Massachusetts.
Well, they they had taken it from Oregon's template.
I love that the select board adopt the flag policy. After review on May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three as written.
Sorry.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Yes. I will, yes.
And I would like to make a motion. Okay. Uh, that the town town administrator. Uh, arranged to erect a second flag pole. Somewhere on. The town common. For the purpose of flying commemorative flags. In fact, most of these flag poles that are second pole, the the town flag was on it and then commemorative flags are on. We've got a town flag, right? Essentially got the seal, I guess. Something like that.
We can jump on.
It's not, that's not correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Friendly amendment.
Sure.
So we were instructing the town administrator to erect the. Said second flag pole on the town.
Well, this is okay, perhaps I shouldn't say second, a flag.
If that pole does not fly the American flag, it has to be lower. Than the.
Which is a challenge, isn't it?
Which is a challenge, isn't it?
I guess my friendly amendment is that I would like the town administrator to come back with a clear inventory of town. Maintained flag poles and a recommendation. For where to. Where to erect. A. New flag pole for the purpose of hosting commemorative flags.
Are you suggesting it might be elsewhere? I don't think that would.
No, no, but I'm, the the part I want is the inventory.
Okay, that's.
Because I don't like the fact that we could potentially add yet another asset. To our responsibility that again, we are not going to maintain. So I'm about the maintenance part.
Well, this poll would kind of be. Right in your face there, it's not out of sight, out of forgotten, but.
Well, I don't know, I'm not sure we have a great track record.
Yeah.
And I. I think putting up a second local. All the common is going to. Is not going to improve the common. And. Personally.
I just don't know where to go.
I don't, it has, it.
That's why I ask for a recommendation, because there's a, there's a. A a concern here, which I think is a valid concern. We're trying to cram a lot onto one flag, right? But we're not quite sure what. To do. Um, so I would like, that's why I phrased the way I did, I would like. Greg and. His team to come back with a recommendation for where we could locate something. Because I'm not, I I agree, I'm not quite sure.
I don't think that counts as a friendly amendment.
Okay, so then I.
Because I think John is trying to say, do it.
Yeah.
And and you're trying to say, think about it.
I I I don't think the two are. Tightly related.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think they are, it's just. Yeah, but but as as a separate question, yeah, where are these other flag poles and what's going on?
Oh, that was probably.
That's correct. Um, is there, I I would like to put a timeframe on this. Greg is what, like four months or five months? I mean, it's not. Super critical.
Thirty-five.
Fine.
Okay, would you restate your motion?
Okay, okay. A motion to request the town administrator to arrange to put up a, I will say, second flag pole. Somewhere. On the common. For the purpose of flying commemorative flags.
Yeah, I think it was seconded.
Good second, just figuring out. My concern is to your point, where does it go and what does it do to to attract?
I I could say subject to review, the location subject to review by the select.
I appreciate that. There's a lot of thought that was put into the memorial. Okay, and.
There's something with, yeah.
You know. And to just try to stick something in there. I can't believe that. Yeah, so like this, I want I want side, I want side view.
Fine.
I don't disagree with you, by the way.
Okay. Are you seconding John's motion or not?
Uh, I don't know, I think with this. With a friendly amendment to recite review.
Yes, subject to to review.
Yes.
Does that mean that if we don't like the solution, we say no? The way that is worded or because the motion is to install something. It's gonna go somewhere.
And whether we like it or not.
That's my question, that's that's my question.
It it should go somewhere. In other words, if it's not there, it can go some other. Place there, but it should go up somewhere.
Does it have to be somewhere in front of town hall?
Well, no, I think it has to be somewhere. In the in the in the common vicinity, yes.
Are you seconding?
No, I withdraw, second, I guess, I just, I want to make sure that we have. Side review and I'm not convinced that the. There's enough room in the common. I do agree a lot of the, that we should have a separate pole. And. Uh, and that takes a lot of pressure off a lot of the things we're doing, so I am in total agreement with the second, uh, poll. I just don't know. Where it's gonna go. And the second, the, the motion as, as. As you put it, I can't, I can't.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna second that. I, I will make a motion, though, to. Request that Greg and his team. Come back to us with a recommendation for a location for. A flag pole for the self-hosting commemorative flags. So then a timeframe, um. Within the next quarter. Is that reasonable, Greg?
Is there something for that?
I can look at it. I second that.
Is there further discussion? John.
I gotta go with what I got, yeah.
Brian.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, no. Okay, we. That one counts, right? The next one is one problem that. Which is the appointments policy. And. The adopted, uh, the second's policy. And among the things that it said was that. Um. Members of the committee appointed, appointees will be. Town residents unless there are special requirements for the position and no candidates are available. And we proceeded to appoint two non-residents to committees which don't have specific requirements. And, um. Did have other candidates. With Harvard committee and the dip.
I know the dip.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, because, uh, Skip, Skip.
Oh, he does not live.
No, he lives in Essex.
But he's a business.
And that's the dip who has.
Yes, yes.
That's, uh.
John, John, Jim Brown, but if, no.
Yeah, I didn't say that.
No. Yes. So. Do we want to change the policy? Do we want to? Pretend that everybody behaves better in the future? That's one narrow part. The other is, um. How we deal with people who are appointed to a committee and their appointment has come to an end. It has been a practice. That we ask. The individual and the committee chair. Um, whether the person. Wants to continue and whether the person in the committee chair is a community member. And then reappointing them without. Um, making an effort to find other. And. I don't know what's. The select board wants to do.
For both of those issues.
Sort of. For, for the issue of, of. And it, um, we've got some others, so I'm forgetting.
No, I'm, I'm.
There's some, so, um, we take one at a time.
Yeah.
Um, so regarding the selection of the non-residents. I'm. I'm never in favor of having a policy that we just like. Break, right? So we found. A real reason to appoint those two individuals. My belief is they were business owners.
Business related.
Business.
In both.
In both instances, right? Taxpayers, so I do think it makes sense to. Tweet the language a little bit to allow for non-resident taxpayers perhaps, or business owners. To be appointed to committees that are flexible and what that would be, but I, I do think it's.
Think that, I think the requirement would be, you know.
Yeah.
A tax.
Taxpayer, yeah.
So they have property.
Yes.
They could have, not a business owner, it was renting space.
Right. Right. Yeah.
See, some of these committees have people that have very specific. Descriptions associated with. I know the historic district committee is, that's the worst. Well, I mean, it's the most specific, you know, with, with most of the members there. And I would have no problem saying one of those slots on the harbor must be. A harbor-related business owner. Because you want a business person on that. The fact that he or she doesn't live in. And, and Manchester is not the key criteria that.
Well, even the downtown improvement, you can make this, that's a business area. Um.
I think, I think we covered that by saying the taxpayers.
Uh. They're taxpayers, like you said, though, if they own the property, they're just renting.
I think we have to. Be able, tighten up a little bit. And I think the, the taxpayers themselves would rather have a taxpayer representing them.
So would we say that for all of the, for those committees, there is. One slot that must be reserved for a person of this profile?
I, I don't, I, I, that's not what my suggestion was. My suggestion, suggestion was more allowing it. To happen.
Well, the question is.
Just saying that you have to have somebody with those, because you could have, you could have a business owner who does live in Manchester, and that's.
That's fine.
That's totally fine, right? Rather than specifically determining the makeup of. Those particular committees without consulting them, I would feel a little uncomfortable with that.
Well, see, they're just having a line and, under the committees. In other, in other words, the general guide would say. That they must be residents except as. Designated in, in the descriptions for each of the committees. Because these committees have various slots that. No, no.
Only the ones that feel.
Only the ones, and they're, they're only a handful. They're only three or four. Committees where this person must be such and such. For the historic committee, one of these people has to be an architect, okay? In this instance, one of these people must be a business owner. Okay, and we're not, we're not saying that they have to be, uh.
Okay, um, for example. Um. Someone who has. An art, uh. A legal practice in town. Um, and lives elsewhere. Would that count as a business owner?
According to Brian's definition, no, they're not a taxpayer.
So if they, if they rent their building. Then they can, if they own their building.
I think they have a more vested interest.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. They're paying taxes. That might.
Get more skin in the game.
Okay. Someone who owns an apartment building?
That's a problem with it. Is it business, I say, you know. So, you're gonna have to do an loan, you want, I don't know. If they, if they're paying taxes and they have a business, and that's the criteria, then I don't follow that.
Okay, so they have to have a business and be paying taxes. It, it's not enough. Just to own property. Somewhere.
And then rent it out to somebody else.
Or, or, or just, it's, it's a woodlot.
I see where you're going here. I don't like it, but I swear it's going. Uh. I, the point where we have two members that, okay. Skip Crocker has property. Okay, that's in the harbor. And it makes perfect sense for him to be on the committee. We, we, we'd want him to be on the committee. Okay, Jim Brown represents, his family represents a lot of property. Okay. They both live in Essex. It makes perfect sense for him to be on the, uh. On the committee, okay? Uh. To this point, Mari, who lives in Essex. Oh, when she did live in Essex, okay, I'm sorry. But she has a business in town, okay? Although, actually. She rents, so she couldn't be on, she's a renter, so she wouldn't be on a downtown group.
I think one thing to keep in mind. And maybe we can structure the language to include this. Regarding the committees, maybe we limit the non-residents to. Advisory committees. Some boards and committees are decision-making committee boards, right? What we're talking about, they, they advise us, so I, I certainly think it's less risky to have a taxpayer non. Resident. On those committees. They're, they're advising us and we can. Choose to take their advice or not, you know.
Like ex officio or something like that.
Hmm. We, we have very few boards that are. Decision-making bodies. A vast majority are, are advising.
Okay. Taxpaying business owners. On the advisory boards. And if they're. Like this, what are the? None of it.
We have that. Debbie has a, a, a database of boards and committees. That's part of what we've been doing. And we can, there's very few. adjudicatory. Ones, there's like seven or something.
Maybe have a second, it's just because.
The, the quasi judicial boards, the planning board, the.
The health.
Health.
Assessors. What was that, I'm sorry, I'm not, yeah, registrars. Okay, it's a very small, sorry, but.
Planning boards, only board, constitution.
Historic district committees. They're making decisions on what they can build.
What helps? That's fine.
Okay.
Um. What I'm asking for tonight is just. Directions.
Yeah.
And I will try to. Grab it, and maybe somebody could send me a list of the boards from which. Um. Firders are not allowed.
Go on.
Yes, oh, gosh.
Okay. Now. Um. The first question I actually raised was, um, how do we fill seats that become vacant during the term of the requirement, which I believe is not a fresh in the comments? And. Um. I. Um. Suggest that we announce the vacancy. And. Interview. Um, the candidates, um. And certainly we should consult with, with the chair of the committee, but we do not need to do joint.
Yeah.
Committee appointments.
I think just making sure that we got open announcements so anybody could.
Yeah.
That's been working well.
Okay. Um, and the next one was the automatic extension. Um, this is a, it's a member of one. And.
I think you've got a, you've got a post it. But, uh, you, you know, you, you really do, but, um.
Yes.
The present members who are contributory. And wanted, want another term should be given every. Consideration.
But they have to interview just like everybody else.
Yeah, although it's a short interview, assuming.
So, so I have a suggestion. There's another board that I'm on that, that kind of does a compromise here. So, um. We're elected to three-year terms. At the end of our first term, um. If we want to continue, you know, this is kind of a, yes, you can continue. Um, but after the second term, it's an open position. So if you were uncomfortable with having an open position hosting at the end of every single term. Um, maybe there's an opportunity for the chair to approve their appointment after their first term. But after their second term ends, it has to be open posted. What?
That actually, um. Solves another, the term limit problem, because if you wanted to come, you didn't want a third term. You apply.
Exactly. Okay, I killed two birds. I'm sorry, bad, bad analogy.
Simply want to get off the board.
Solves one problem. You can do that, too.
Greg, you have a feel for the longevity of these hundred and fifty people? On all of these thirty-odd boards?
So it varies a lot, but we have some very long.
Uh, uh, I'm, I'm sure we've got, uh, like twenty or thirty people that have been there for a very long time.
Yes, yes. So, so I, I've actually learned something as part of working with the boards and committees that, um. It's my impression that one of the reasons some people stay on. Is because they don't know somebody. Who could, or who is willing to take their place. So it's not that they feel they have to be on the board. It's just we've been doing this, you know, replacing with your friends' approach for so long and they don't know anybody. They feel an obligation to the town to stay. So if we do introduce more of this open call, I, I, I do think naturally some of that will come to a conclusion. Um, but the question is, do we do it right after the first term or just maybe let them go to a second term and then do?
So the conclusion, the, there are a lot of people, I'm gonna say a lot, but there are people in the bucket where. Yeah, I'll run again, but if you can find somebody and you put out the ad, somebody responds.
Ron.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if you're not, I know it's tough getting people in these roles.
We're seeing this on the ZBA right now.
Right.
Okay. Uh. That. I was gonna, I was gonna resign, and then I want to move back. I know that, um. Catherine Howe wanted to resign, but she's gonna hang in there. No, it's, it's, it's a, uh.
Do an open poll.
Al call is.
Yeah, and people care about the town, and as long as they feel that it's, that there's new people coming in who care like they do, they're comfortable with saying goodbye. Doing something different. That's at least some of them, not all of them.
Some Sarah Melish is her hand up.
Oh, sorry, oh.
Yes, Sarah.
Yeah, so I just want to give my perspective. I've been on committees in town since, I think, two thousand eleven. On the finance committee since two thousand eleven. Um, we currently have a problem on the ZBA that we've announced. A desire for positions. We've had one person respond. We have no other applicants. Through the years, we've gone through many periods where we don't have any volunteers app, applying. And, and I think that if you. Take a current member. And subject them to a cross-examination. That they're gonna say, ooh, I don't want to be a volunteer, and I think we really need volunteers, and I think we go on waves, and. I just think, I, if I would be insulted. If I had to, had to have an interview. For a committee. And you rejected me, I would never, ever volunteer for another position. That's my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you.
So, so I think what I'm hearing is you serve at the pleasure of the chair. Once you're, once you're appointed. Does that make sense? After your third, after your three years are up. And then reapply.
Well, yeah, I mean, my suggestion was you let someone continue to serve. At the pleasure of the chair for a second term. You know. After six years, right, then you get into the term limit discussion. I, I. I think fresh ideas are always good, and I personally. Would like to see.
I, I can, I can wrap my head around second term with pleasure. And then a third term, go back and forth, and go to the positions opened up again, and goes before.
Okay, and then the fourth term.
I, I think we.
I'm very true, maybe it's, uh.
We stay silent on term limits. We just don't say anything about it.
No, no, it's just a question, if you, it's after the first term.
You have a second term if you want it.
Well, second term if you want it. The third term, you have to. Um.
Reapply.
Reapply. And a fourth term.
Reapply, well, not do that. You have to do that, that worked for you.
I, I think we need to allow fresh air to committees, yeah.
Yeah, so we, yeah, have to reply after the second. I mean.
He shared that.
Okay. And, 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 and it's, you know. The point Sarah was making is probably correct, and, and, but people may not apply, and then you keep.
She, I mean, she's right, but I mean, it's a reapply. Everybody in the room knows you.
Right, exactly.
You know, I don't, I'm not, why are you showing up?
The most powerful now.
Yes. Um.
Unless you need a specific skill set on the board that are committing, that would be helpful. You know.
And, and the challenge is, is that many of those people, if you're around for six years. You're the chair. In many instances, you're the chair. And that becomes a more difficult. And a lot of times you're the chair because you want it, you want it. I guess, uh. So these, these people are important people.
Oh, that's very.
I'm sorry, I skipped. A section of the.
Oh, the cheap position thing?
Okay.
Well, let's, let's finish. Well, let's finish this one, which is, should we have a mechanism for removing appointed members? Lack of fitness and profit at the black duties. Currently, we have just neglected duties if you don't show up. Okay. Number introduction. Working on this. And it really doesn't have to be decided. A darkness. I'm sorry, we got so involved with the vehicle placement and the staff. What did we want to talk about on the chief's position?
Well, it really was. Opportunity to, to, perspectives from in chief theory. We're moving forward with the recruiting process for replacement. We, listen. At least one internal candidate that has, that has expressed a high level of interest. But we're also pursuing out on board, or out, about external candidates as well. So it's a simultaneous approach. And. So things are progressing along those lines, but if you, if you wanted an opportunity to hear, so choose for practice is would be a good time to do.
I'm very sorry.
I'm listening. No problem.
Okay, so.
I actually don't have anything prepared. I started on the agenda, but I wasn't sure of what in turn was, was my item, so. My question is, you've been here three years. Small town. What is, what kind of? What does a candidate need to be successful? Side of fixed skin. Interesting question. I, I, I really wouldn't want to shoot for the hip on that. Try, I've been, Greg asked me, I've been trying to pick together some ideas and much more. You and Greg can have this, continue the conversation.
Let me ask a question. So I've heard that. Our county structure here, Essex County structure is. I guess interesting. And if you're, if you come from outside of Essex County, there's a, a learning curve, shall we say. Did you? Run into that or, you know, would it be easier for a chief? To have, you know, some familiarity with, certainly the town, but I'm just thinking the county.
No, I mean, I, I have some good friends that I already had here in Essex County and I've made some since I'm. Here as a, as a whole, the Essex County Fire Chiefs Association is a very strong supportive. Organization to get a lot, lot done. There are individual members that don't necessarily work and play well with others or ascribe to the same type of. Ideas that would mutually are how this votes to work, but as it, as a whole, I don't think it's. The county as a whole is not an issue. I can see that.
I'm just, and that's so much an issue, but the way we run things here is different. Than outside of Essex County and is there, there's always a learning curve, but my question is, how steep is it?
I mean, a lot of the different fire districts in Massachusetts work very different. So it's not, you just have to know. I mean, some things that are here, I've seen other places and some things you hear, I haven't seen in the past, so it's not. It's not like an inherently bad system county line. It's a pretty robust base. Some people utilize it and offer more than others.
That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, I prefer to, you know, it's more followed to something arriving, you can share that.
Yeah, I definitely have something.
If you get that to, to credit, we just, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, if you have any specific questions, I'd happy to answer. I didn't have anything.
Okay. I think we covered everything up to the ears.
I think a lot of my stuff was on the agenda.
Pox and rec, the meeting tomorrow night. It's just our email, I mean, about pickleball again, all right. Which would, I think, fall on everyone's lap. I didn't see the whole distribution of the email. The playing field is on, on schedule. There's no. I think it's under tuned, they're planning on being able to. To utilize that. Same beaches getting, actually being used now. And so with that, from some of the pitfalls and not being understand, I have a lot of questions when the. Bathhouse is going to open up and what's going on there, but you know. You could anticipate, but this is the first real nice May I've seen in years. So, you know, I think it shows them a great job. And I don't know what was going on with everything else after tomorrow's meeting.
Be exciting.
Then I guess I probably should go whether or not. So the chair, she did post some, something on Facebook about the next steps, et cetera. So it does appear one way or another, we need to have a Manchester town meeting or not necessarily.
Well. It's the interpretation of the law. There's a little bit of a gray area. One interpretation says regardless of what has been approved. If the full budget hasn't been approved, then the committees are, the usual school district committee is required to come back with. Others feel that if, if they were to accept some of the level funded budgets. And because Essex approved that, not the, they approved a budget without the overbuy. But that, if the school committee accepted that, there's an argument that they do not need to come back.
Believe that's what happened in 2012. That the school committee accepted a budget that fit within Essex's successful, within Essex's non-overbide. And.
Did they do that ahead of time or that was after they disapproved it? I thought they, I thought they adjusted it ahead of time. Yeah.
I guess the reason for my question was, should we need to hold a special town meeting? Are we already looking at dates? I mean, there's not much time and when would we need to finalize a date on that?
So. In terms of trying to juggle. Different desires. So there's also desire to do a correction on zoning by law.
Right, right, yes.
Planning board are not trying to do that. So we're looking at the last week of June. People get anxious about summer vacations. We're gonna run into this, the best we've ran until last year. Yeah, I think we did the seconds the last week, but. So the weekend of the 26th is what we've been looking at as a potential. That Monday or Tuesday, from 6, 27, 28th to Wednesday. Don't want to go much past Wednesday because now we're getting into fourth of July weekend, pre-fourth of July weekend. So that's, that's certainly possibility if you're comfortable.
So we're not targeting anything before that last week?
It'd be very difficult to get, even from the school committee. So they're, they're meeting tomorrow night and they want to hold a public forum.
Right.
And then they're looking to, you're finally few of. June, that first week of June. And so we need, then you need to approve a warrant. And then that warrant has to be posted for 14 days. So it's possible we could, possibly we could squeeze it into the third week of June. You'd have to hold some special meetings to approve things.
I'm trying to, they, they did not, they did not approve the prop two and a half override. So is Essex going back to the drawing board looking at both the school budget component and their operating component?
No.
Just the school?
Just the school.
And I don't understand. If you didn't miss it, I mean, there are two, two factors. I mean, both the operating and the.
So they've approved their time out.
Okay, but they also passed the school budget.
They approved a level, well. Can't see.
They did that earlier.
They approved a non-override budget for the school.
Right.
No, well then.
Oh, it was a contingent.
So there was a separate vote.
There was a separate vote, which went, which, which passed.
Correct. What, what failed was the additional appropriation that requires the overall. So another 260,000, maybe something like that, additional funding. That, that was approved at the town meeting, but failed at the ballot. So that means the override is not approved and the request from the school committee therefore was not approved.
So.
So it's $180,000 somehow.
So to, to cut Essex by 260 means the total budget has to be cut down by around 6, 6, 650.
We're twice that, so that's.
Yeah.
280. So.
Or 600, that's the total.
About 60, it's big.
Right.
It's a lot of money.
That's wrong.
My, and it'll be an interesting meeting.
So, so back on my logistics question. We're having a. Select board meeting on Monday, June 5th. But the school committee is voting on the budget the day after, June 6th. Okay, so we won't know what the schools are going to be doing by that meeting. So the next planned select board meeting is June 19th, but that's Juneteenth.
That's, well, that's too late.
Right, that's what I'm getting at, so.
Need a special meeting the weekend of the 5th.
Okay, so that is what I am getting at. Could you schedule, could we, by our next meeting? Get a calendar for that, actually.
Okay, why don't we plan to meet on the Thursday after the 5th?
Yeah, so as long as you have a form, I will not be here. I'll be out of the country, but as long as you're, I, I posted in that calendar that I wouldn't be here, but as long as you. Have your form, they agree and need to, you need to meet that week.
So just. They'll say we're trying to factor as what is the planning board going to be read? So if.
We got four, you said we have to approve something 14 days before the town meeting?
Right, so if the town meeting was, town meeting was the. The 28th. Then you could have, you could approve the warrant the 13th.
Not the 27th.
Well, the reason why I'm going for the 28th is because if the select, if the planning board finishes their work on the 12th.
Right. Sliding board meet on 13.
13.
14 days after the, oh, it has to be posted for, okay.
Right, yeah, yeah, so. We can meet in the morning.
So you gotta wait for the planning board. It sounds like. We can't publish a full warrant till, or approve a full warrant until the 13th.
That's what I'm thinking.
So the question is whether or not you still want to meet on the 8th to discuss the, the school portion, or you just want to get it all done?
I think we'll know on the.
We will.
Well. We'll certainly know a lot by the 5th, but I don't know if we'll know everything. It's about the school's direction. So I think things are going to be a little fluid, but if people can look at their calendars and look at the 8th or the 13th as possible special meeting dates. That would be helpful.
I, I'm free on the 13th, I'm not free. But like I said, as long as you have a form, you just go meet. Or you need to be.
So the, the planning board may be able to do some things. Earlier because town council's reviewing, they may not need to hold official public hearing. They will hold informational meetings, but. The, the part of the proposal to amend section 12, they already held a public hearing and that is still valid. Maybe do some modifications to that. So we'll, we'll know more by the end of this week about what they have to do.
So then maybe we want to just take the action. Well, we're not having a special meeting. This is our last meeting for the month, okay?
Well, you do have a special meeting on the 20th.
That's right.
Well, we're gonna focus on the governance work.
That's right, okay.
So we, we give it update at that point. And that's next week.
Yeah, I'm zooming on that one.
Okay, so maybe we could.
Hopefully nail down some.
Nail down the dates of the town meeting and any pre-meetings next week or the 25th.
And in that regard, I guess I did speak with you on the 25th that that meeting can be moved up a little bit earlier. Because I have a historic district commission meeting at 7:00. So this can be at 9:30.
We'll come back.
Thank you.
And that covers the, we have something, what's something? The consent agenda. And that's a part coming on, on the May 1st. And the, the super, super board. As everyone's doing the.
March 29th, yes.
Debbie sent an updated one because.
Yes, and they were updated. You changed some vote or something.
Yes.
So I never even read the first one.
Okay.
But I don't think I read May 1st.
That was on the original.
Suppose we propose bump of the minutes if no one is sure whether we don't have a majority this.
May I take a straw poll? How many have been able to review the March 29th ones? Okay, so can we pull that out of the, pull the May 1st ones out of the consent agenda? So I, I moved to pull the May 1st meeting minutes out of the consent agenda and approve the remaining consent agenda items listed.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. John.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
I saw this. Okay. The. May 1st meeting, yes. So we defer them for. Connect to the next meeting. Then it's the town administration board. Then it's the county administration report.
Very quickly, because I was going to give you the school budget update, but you already did that, so that's fine. Obviously, election day. Memorial School from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The people will vote, we have it on really. The main agenda for tomorrow. And then, as I said, we talked about the school and the needs for, most likely a need to be vote on the budget. And then thirdly, just highlighting the vulnerability action plan and the rotunda plans that will be coming before you to June, June 5th meeting, this cycle. We'll have that on the dock. Well, that's enough for now.
What actions do we need to take on the court on this?
Not. Unless you want to give an opinion on my most chapter chapter 91 license applications.
I have no opinion.
I'd like to just hear a summary of the plan for education for the water. I have read it.
Right. The short version, the short version is this. So we, we have a registration. Allows us to draw up the maximum amount of water from our from our systems. From my construct well. And those systems were basically basically grandfathered, so they're you re-register every 10 years. We registered ours back in, we got a new registration back in '23. And that registration says we have the ability and the right to withdraw that amount. And it's up to us as the operators of that system to manage it. What the.
Excuse me, Greg, this is the amount of water per day or per year?
Per year.
Total per year, okay.
It's on a, it's on a annual basis.
Okay, fine.
It does have a registration that is an average daily.
And I know that we're over.
Point seven two.
Point seven three.
Seven three. But I, my understanding is that it's, that's an average, you go over there.
We're over that allotment.
Some are over, and the winter, we're way under. That total yield is, is what I believe is what governs. So, so the state has now proposed new drought regulations that allow them to basically usurp some of our managing powers in our legislation. And the complaint is that the state is looking at a regional, visualized basis.
That anyway.
So they're not taking into account the specific attributes of a given watershed. And so what they may decide is appropriate for the county may not really be applicable to us, because each watershed is unique in how it is impacted and how it operates. So this complaint says, state, you've overstepped your limits. And this is pushing back. So there are 20 some odd municipal water systems that have joined, filed very similar complaints with the state in an effort to have them back, back off of it on this new regulation. So that's, that's what this is about.
Okay, thank you. So we're not alone.
We're not alone, no. No, in fact, this has been headed up by a string of these larger system.
We're just, we're just an added complaint. Just jumping on board.
Yes, yeah. So you'll prove jumping on board 60 months ago.
And I don't believe this costs anything to you.
I'm sorry.
There's no, there's no real cost to town at this point.
Very middle. It's a couple, couple thousand dollars, couple, $3,000. So that's what this is.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point. I would like the motion to enter into the section, session from the general at the 38th, section 21, page 3. To discuss strategy with respect to point of department, give an open meeting with the decision that will affect on the bargaining division, what is the body and here's the players. Not to return to open session. So moved.
Second.
The fashion.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, yes. Yeah.
Thanks, Debbie.